Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the June 13th, 2022, Pangton County Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on June 21st, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. Note that the Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. The speaker request forms look like this. They're located on the back table. If you are neither the applicant or an agent on an item, I'm going to ask that you fill those out and turn them into Jerry, and she'll get them up to me, and we'll make sure that the speaker request forms get addressed on each of the items. We'll go ahead and get started. Roll call. Note that everyone's here. Travis is here from the board. First item on the agenda is approval of the May 23rd, 2022 minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Noting none, is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval for the discussion. Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Second item is approval of the agenda. Today's agenda on the consent items includes items three through six. Regular county items seven through 28, and then followed by your end of meeting items 29 through 33. Are there any changes to the agenda? Noting none, is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of today's agenda. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Order to the consent agenda.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thonison, Deputy Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by the point by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are considered to the recommendations to the Pangton County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Agenda item number three is conditional use permit 14-33 for Todd and Miranda Ruland to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a permanent residence in an agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 14-33 with conditions. Agenda item number four is conditional use permit review 17-05 for Delmar and Melissa Nelson to review a vacation home rental in the subject property in an agriculture district. And staff recommends to approve the extension of conditional use permit 17-05 with conditions. Agenda item number five is conditional use permit review 21-37 for Todd and Deborah Proctor to review a recreational vehicle to be lived in on the subject property less than 180 days per year in an agriculture district. And staff recommends to approve the extension of conditional use permit 21-37 with conditions. And lastly is agenda item number six, Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment Review 19-07 for Lloyd and Catherine Marty to review a garage as an accessory structure prior to a principal use on the subject property. And staff recommends to end major or minor plan unit development amendment 19-07.
Thank you. Are there any items that staff wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
No.
Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the consent agenda? For those in the audience, the consent agenda consists of items three, four, five, and six. We'll vote on those four items at the same time, unless there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on those items. Noting none, staff recommends approval of today's consent agenda items three, four, five, and six. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion and second for approval of today's consent agenda. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item seven.
Code Sec Environmental Planner. Item seven is road naming request. It is to name a road a 66-foot wide private access easement. It's approximately 995 feet long and provides access to five lots located off Highway 40. The new road name will be Talon Trail. The applicant is Rick Shulkey, and the new road will provide access to five lots that he's currently planning. Once you get five lots or five dollars points, the road needs to be named. Emergency Services Ted is okay with the name Talon Trail, so staff is recommending approval of road naming.
Questions for staff on this? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Noting none, staff recommends approval of road naming for ELS properties to Talon Trail. You just need a motion and approval on this, correct? Is there a motion for approval of this?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of the proposed road naming Talon Trail. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. On item eight.
Item eight is also a road naming request. It is to name approximately 4,709 4,709 feet of right away, a 66-foot wide right away that provides access to six lots that's located off of Spring Creek Road. The planning department received a road naming application to name an existing right away assurance lane. The applicant is Brian Barber of AMB Ranch. And again, the road provides access to six lots. Again, the road naming was approved by 911, so staff is recommending approval to name the road Assurance Lane.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this? To confirm, no one in the audience wishes to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of the proposed road name as Assurance Lane for the entire 4,709 feet of right away, located off of Spring Creek Road with the following with one condition, correct? Is there a motion?
Move to approve Assurance Lane with one condition.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item nine.
King Commissioners, Jason Thonison, Deputy Planning Director. Agenda item number nine is conditional use permit 22-23 to allow an accessory structure, a garage as a primary structure on the subject property. The applicant is Susan Murray. Her agent is KTM Design Solutions. Property is located west of the intersection of Big Horn Road and Pioneer Circle. It is 4.97 acres, currently zoned suburban residential district. It does contain a residential garage, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. So the zoning ordinance lists seven criteria the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. I will read those seven and staff's responses, starting with number one. Will the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use be detrimental or to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare? Staff found no, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, will the establishment of the maintenance or operation of the conditional use permit in any foreseeable manner substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted? Staff found no, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the uses and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity of garages, a residential use which conforms with the residential uses in the area. Number three, will the establishment of the conditional use impede the normal orderly development or an improvement of the surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district? Staff found no, the requested use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Number four, will adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary sites, site improvements be provided? Staff found yes, access is off Big Horn Road, which is an existing right of way. And number five, will adequate have adequate measures been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion to public streets? Staff found yes, the requested use should not significantly impact traffic congestion. Number six, will the conditional use conform to all applicable regulations in the district which is located? Staff found yes, the property is zoned suburban residential district. An accessory structure as a primary use is allowed with an approved conditional use permit. And lastly, number seven, is the conditional use consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan? Staff found yes, the future land use of the subject property is rural residential district, allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As the property sits today, it does contain a 30-foot by 32-foot detached garage. Request was sent off for interdepartmental review. County Highway did note that the Highway Department has no comment, as this is in the Big Horn Road District. County addressing stated an address will be assigned to the existing garage if this conditional use permit is approved. Once the address is assigned, it must be posted on the structure so it can be seen in both directions of travel. Rapid City Planning Department stated the adjacent roads are not identified in the city's major street plan. The city's future land use plan designates the subject property as forest conservation area. Staff's analysis of the request is that this property was planted through the city of Rapid City due to the three-mile plating jurisdiction. That lot only contains the 30 by 32-foot garage and is the reason for this request. Staff has received multiple public comments about this request, and I believe those were given to you. They didn't make it into the packet for your review prior to this meeting, but we didn't get those to you. Pardon us for that. There are approximately 80 lots taking access from Clarkson Road south of the intersection of Clarkson Road and Clarkson Lane. Clarkson Road is a dead-end road system. The applicant has applied for a variance to exceed more than 40 dwelling units on a dead-end road system, and that request was approved by the Board of Commissioners last Friday. With that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 22-23 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Right, Travis.
Jason, what did the Board of Commissioners hear this already?
The board heard the variance.
On the variance?
Yeah, they heard the variance to allow a single-family residence on this lot. But since this lot was created through Rapid City, they never did get a conditional use permit to allow the accessory structure as a principal use, so that's what the request is for. But they did get approval, the applicants did get approval for the variance to put a single-family residence on this property. But until the residence is built, we still have a need for this conditional use permit.
Then my next question, just a simple one. From the picture, does that mean the garage is already there?
Right, that garage existed prior to plating.
All right. And those other pictures are just vehicles or things?
Yes, I believe there are some construction materials there, as well as a fenced-in basketball area.
All right.
Additional questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? None noted. With that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 22-23 with seven conditions. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval for the discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Travis.
From the picture, and I don't know whether anybody knows, but it appears like two different accesses go through the property. Does that affect when you're doing your building permit, Jason?
Yeah, so one of those was vacated.
One of them was vacated. Which, do you know which one? The one to the house or the one to the neighbor, it looks like?
I believe it was the one to the bring it up.
Almost looks like they could do both of them out of one axis, but
And I believe that's what they
the way it said, you'd have to do a new axis.
Right, I believe that's what they did. I think they vacated this one, and they're going to use this one for this.
Ah, my answer just walked up a bit.
Yes. Okay. Good morning, Janelle Finkham with KTM Design Solutions. So the road to the right provides access to the property to the north that doesn't show up on this on the screen. It's one lot further north. And there's an easement in place that allows that common access. Yeah, that is a funny, out-twisted scale drawing. So they will continue to use that driveway to access the residence to the north, and then they will continue to use the existing driveway, which is just to the left of the one that we were talking about that accesses the garage and will be the new residence. And the purpose of this was for Ms. Murray to be able to provide a house for her parents who are aging, and so she intends to build a house for them on this other lot. Just so happened that their garage is located on that portion when they divided the lot.
Do you know the same owner? In other words, both of the properties with that access?
The two lots that appear on the screen are under the same ownership, one person.
Yes, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Further questions? Noting none, does anyone else wish to speak on this item? In a motion and second for approval of conditional use permit CU 22-23 with seven conditions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 10.
Good morning, Commissioner Shuti Masabun, Planning Department. Agenda item number 10 is conditional use permit amendment CU 21-52 to amend an existing conditional use permit for a recreational resort to allow the existing manager's resident to be used as a vacation home rental. The applicant is Campfire Cabins LLC, Albert Sutton, and he is here in the audience if you have any question for him. The location is at 12644 Campfire Drive. The property is zoned agriculture district. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit application. They are as followed, and on the screen for you, and staff will read the finding. Criteria one, no, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, no, the requested use should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Criteria three, no, the requested use should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Established uses of campgrounds and rental cabins are present within one mile of the property. Criteria four, yes, the necessary utilities are in place. Criteria five, yes, the approach is off of Campfire Drive. Criteria six, yes, the current zoning district is agriculture district. The requested use will conform to all applicable regulations of the district if this conditional use permit amendment is approved. Criteria seven, yes, the future land use of this property is ranch district, allowing this conditional use permit amendment should be consistent with the current comprehensive plan. The subject property consists of a single-family resident cabins and a garage, and also with two on-site wastewater treatment systems. One is for the existing residence, which is going to be a vacation home rental, and the other one is for cabins. The department, the request was routed for an interdepartmental review. County Highway commented regarding an approach to the subject property, and easement was filed and recorded. The all approach was, the all approach for this parcel has gate and drainage ditch was dug. Staff will include a condition of approval that the all approach be receded. This is the all approach right here. No other significant concerns were received from other departments. Staff performed a site visit and found that the cabins are under constructions, and the applicant is working with Department of Health of the renewal of the lodging license. Staff has not received any complaints or concern regarding the requested use. Staff recommends approval of the amendment of conditional use permit CU 21-52 with 26 conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
I have one.
Go ahead.
No managers on site on these?
The manager actually live on the, this is the property that the manager stay, so they own both lots, the one on the south side.
So they do, they will be on the other one?
Yes.
Okay. The other one, and this is just something I noticed, one of the Department of Health comments, it says new cabins seven through 12. So they're planning on building more at this point?
So no, the seven to 12 is actually, the one to six is on the property on the south side, and seven to 12 is the one that actually will be on the subject property, if you see the picture in the back. So one to six is on this property. And when he counts, so it's count from seven to 12, it's right here.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Further questions?
Mr. Chair, I did have a question for the applicant.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? Okay. Yes, sir, if you'd please note your name.
Albert Sutton, Campfire Cabins.
Okay.
Mr. Sutton, mine's really simple. You indicated in your filing that you had a procedural delay in getting the renewal of your license. Do you see that staying on time with what you thought from their replies? Are things staying on time for you from the state?
Yes. The Department of Health, is that what we're talking about? They came and inspected, they approved everything. She said, I just made copy of your well report, your DNR approval letter, and pictures of the cabins as soon as they're completed. We had submitted everything last week, which is part of your application that I have in front of you, and I got an out-of-office reply until today. So I assume we'll have the written portion of that license today, but we did have approval, you know, to go ahead and rent everything, so.
Okay. That was what I was getting at. In other words, so we're not doing things ahead of time when we expect a delay. In other words, you're, it's running right with what the one lady had in the letter.
Yep, everything's going great, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep, and this, these, just for information, these pictures on the, that are up right now are the pictures of the new cabins that have been built. So where her first picture didn't show them, they've actually been constructed, everything's done, so. Looking out nice, I think.
Further questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of amendment of conditional use permit CU 21-52 with 26 conditions. Is there a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 11.
Item 11 is conditional use permit CU 22-27 to allow a bed and breakfast on the subject property. The applicants and owners are Jeffrey and Kelly Gorman, and they are here in the audience today if you have any question for them. The location is at 8412 Dunsmore Road. The subject property is zoned suburban residential district. The zoning criteria, I'm sorry, the zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They are as follows, and the criteria on the screen, staff will read the finding. Criteria one, no, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, no, the requested use should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Criteria three, no, the requested use should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for users permitted in the district. Established uses for a bed and breakfast is present within one mile of the property. Criteria four, no, the property is located within the city of Rapid City, one mile septic jurisdiction, and the Colonial Pine Hills Sanitary District. Staff contacted both authorities regarding the requested use. That is a discrepancy of the size of the existing on-site wastewater treatment system and whether it is able to accommodate the residents and the proposed bed and breakfast. The applicant was informed of this concern and was directed to both septic authorities to bring the existing septic system into compliance. Also, the existing fire extinguisher at the bed and breakfast needs to be repaired, also need to be replaced. Criteria five, no, I know, sorry, criteria five, yes, the access is off of Dunsmore Road. Criteria six, no, the proposed bed and breakfast is currently in the existing detached garage, which is located in the front yard. Also, a kitchen is located in the guest room. The requested use does not meet the requirements of the Section 322 of the Pangton County zoning ordinance. Staff informed the applicant about the aforementioned issues and provided him option to bring the property into compliance if he wishes to move forward with this requested use. Criteria seven, no, the future land use of this property is suburban residential district. The requested use is not consistent with the county comprehensive plan without an approved conditional use permit. The property consists of the existing, the, I'm sorry, the property consists of a single family residence, a detached garage, and a detached garage with living quarters, which will be the bed and breakfast. The request that use was routed for an interdepartmental review. County Highway Department stated that an approach permit is required for an existing approach. County addressing coordinator stated that a separate address will be required for the bed and breakfast. County Ordinance Enforcement Officer stated that a violation case is open for an operation of bed and breakfast without an approved conditional use permit. Colonial Pine Hills Sanitary District and the city of Rapid City Public Works commented that the existing septic system does not size big enough for the total bedroom for the house and the bed and breakfast. Upon the departmental review team meeting at the June 2nd, 2022, site visits, several concerns were discovered. Staff met the applicant on site and discussed the concern. Staff informed him options to bring the property into compliance. Staff also sent follow-up email to the applicant. The applicant met the staff last Friday and stated that he would contact the city of Rapid City Public Works regarding his septic system. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit CU 22-27 to the July 11th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant time to address concerns from the planning department with one condition.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff? I do have the speaker request form for Jeff and Kelly Gorman. Do you wish to speak on this item, or are you guys agreeable to the continuation of this item to the July 11th, 2022 meeting?
I'm agreeable to wait.
Okay. Do you have any questions, I guess, for the commission? It sounds like there's some things that you guys need to follow up on.
Hi, I'm Kelly Gorman. The only, I don't have a question, but the only thing is, we are concerned about the septic, just not concerned that it's too small, but we did get the data from, gathered the data from the Colonial Plains Water Department, and I just wanted to let you know, like, the most water used, which we had a leaky toilet, was in, started in December of 2021 and went through January of 2022, and that was 8,000, approximately 8,000 gallons per month. Uh, typical use is between 5,500 and, um, 5,800.
Okay.
Per month. So I think that's something that we.
I will. Well, it sounds like there's maybe some questions about the size that just need to get figured out between, uh, you folks in the city and, and
Okay.
Colonial Pine Hill Sanitary District. So, um, if there's no other concerns, the staff's recommendation is to continue this item to the July 11th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. That sounds perfect to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion in second to continue. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries for an item 12.
And then, Tru Team, I see that the recommendation is to actually withdraw this preliminary plan. So I don't know, uh, if you need to go all the way through it. You certainly, you certainly can. Is there any changes?
No, there's no changes.
Okay. If there's, if there's no changes, um, in the, uh, I guess in respect of everyone's time, staff is recommending approval of the withdrawal of the preliminary plan PPL 22-27. And this is per the applicant's request.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the email is also attached to the staff report.
Okay. To confirm. Do we still need to read through it?
No, you don't need to read through it. Megan Greer with the State's Attorney's Office. I would just recommend that you deny it without prejudice. So that way it's not pending in front of any board or anything. So that way they can bring it back later if they want to, but they'll have to reapply.
So the recommendation is to deny without prejudice instead of
Yes.
approved withdrawal?
Yes. That's what we should be doing.
Noted. Does that make sense, everyone?
And they, they still have to do go through it again, even though we put without prejudice?
They would have to come back if they wanted to, uh, subdivide, if they would, if they wanted to come back with the preliminary plan and subdivide. That's correct.
Um, actually, the applicants, um, already got the, um, um, was able to eloquently describe this portion. And, um, the surveyors also worked with the register of deed and got the legal description for that.
Okay. Um, so to confirm, no one wishes to speak on this? Noting none, staff recommends, um, to deny without prejudice preliminary plan PPL 22-27. Uh, and this would be in accordance with the applicant's request. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion in second to deny without prejudice. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 13.
Uh, could we second our middle planner? Item 13 is conditional use permit CU 22-25. It's to allow a mobile coffee trailer to be operated on the subject property. So staff actually received an email on Friday from the applicant. They found a permanent spot in Custer, so they're no longer wishing to, uh, request this, the CUP. So they're withdrawing their application. So staff's gonna make the recommendation to deny without prejudice.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, um, staff recommends, uh, to deny without prejudice conditional use permit CU 22-25. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion in second, uh, to deny. Further conversation? Noting none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 14.
Uh, item 14 is conditional use permit CU 22-28. It's to allow a guest house in a building on the subject property. The applicant landowner is Mike Leonard N. Myers. Location is 15225 Longview Road. Current zoning is agriculture district with a residential use, and there is undetermined flood hazard on the property. Again, when we look at conditional use permits, there's seven criteria the planning commission may consider. The answers are on the screen. I'll read them aloud. Uh, double, number one, no, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, general welfare of the public. Uh, number two, no, the requested use should not substantially impair, diminish the users' values or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for, for, for purposes already permitted. Number three, no, the requested use should not impede the normal, orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Number four, yes, the subject property is served by a private onsite wastewater treatment system and well. Uh, number five, yes, the existing approach will, approach will provide ingress and egress to minimize traffic congestion along the road. Guest houses are used, are used similarly to single-family residences and should not generate significant amounts of traffic on the property. Uh, number six, yes, the requested use conforms to all, all applicable regulations of Agriculture District and approved conditional use permits. And number seven, yes, future land use is identified as Agriculture District. The guest house is consistent with this district with an approved conditional use permit. Uh, so currently on the property, there is a single-family residence with an attached garage and deck. And there's a 40 by 96 pole barn. Again, there, it is serviced by an onsite wastewater treatment system. This was rather on for any partner view. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. Uh, the applicants will record a deed restriction and file it at registered deeds after the building permit is approved. Staff has not received any complaints or concerns regarding the requested use. So staff is recommending approval of conditional use permits CU 22-28 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just one, Cody. When you're issuing building permits for this because we're voting to approve this, do they allow for an extra exit, exit on these sort of things, uh, for fire hazard or?
Like an additional approach off the property?
Well, I'm thinking more out of the, the actual living quarters themselves in the building.
They have to, uh, any building now has to meet international building code. Also, if international building.
So they have more than one exit for fire?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Noting none. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 22-28 with 11 conditions. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion in second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 15.
Item 15 is preliminary plat PPL 22-25. It is to create lots three, four, and five of Storm Hill subdivision number two. The applicant landowner is Russell and Kimberly Johnson. The survey, surveyor is PK Land Surveying, Martin Cost. Location of the property is 23969 Palmer Gulch Road. It involves approximately 16 acres. Current zoning is Agriculture District and Rural Residential District with an existing land use of residential. And there is, uh, special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, currently on the prop, on the property on tax ID 68296, so the southern, the southern portion, which is going to be lot three, is a single-family residence and a detached garage with a septic system. The other two lots are vacant. Again, proposed lot three will be 5.281 acres and will contain the structures that were just listed. Uh, the proposed plat is, is adjusting the lot lines, uh, for the three parcels. So density is not increased. Uh, rezone RG 22-12 and conference plan amendment CA 22-11, uh, wa- was heard at the June 10th uh, board meeting last Friday, and both of those were approved. Uh, so the properties are zoned properly now. Uh, staff finds no significant issues with this request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing land uses and area, and the density is not increased. So staff is recommending approval of PPL 22-25.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this engine item?
Just one, Mr. Chair. The last time we saw this, there was some question about the access and clearing the one property. I, I assume those have all been resolved.
Correct. The, the neighbor came in and had concerns with how he could see the approach. The, the problem is, is that this is three lots that are just adjusting lot lines. So it's going to be three, three lots anyways. He could go and put an access easement in there and why?
Either one of the two.
As long, if, as long as he obtains an approach permit by County Highway, which I believe, I don't, I don't believe at this point he has. I haven't heard anything. County Highway said he hadn't at this point, but that'll be, need to be done. But he can go put an access easement for those lots without plating. So.
Okay. Good. But that has been clarified. Good. Yes. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem. Further questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
On condition number six, says prior to the filling of the final plat, I think you want to lose an L in filling.
We do, yes.
Good catch. Additional questions? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of preliminary plat PPL 22-25 with nine conditions. Note, noting the edit on item six, filling to filing. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion in second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 16.
Item 16 is conditional use permit CU 22-15. It is to allow a green bin to be used as a primitive cabin rental on the subject property. This was continued, uh, from the May 23rd, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. As the commission had questions for the landowner, the landowner is in the audience if there are any questions for her.
Okay. Um, and I don't, Charlie, did you have the questions on this one?
Seems like you did. I'm trying to scratch my head. But I had one for Cody. We, we should drop condition number 10, shouldn't we? Because of the one we added?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I do have a speaker request form, um, from, uh, Mark, uh, Papasek? If that's correct?
Mr. Chair, I think I remembered my question.
Okay. We'll circle back.
Good morning, Mark Papasek, uh, landowner as well, um, adjacent to the property. Our primary concerns with this, um, I realize you're new, uh, Mr. LaCetera.
LaCetera.
LaCetera. Thank you. Sorry. Um, but our primary concerns with this, um, were fire, wildland fire, um, from having additional people that are not going to, a VRBO type of situation that are not going to have a vested interest necessarily with, um, what happens there. And immediately to the southeast, we have a winter pasture, um, that, um, has a bunch of tree area, which is what, where we take our cowcalf pairs immediately following calving. And, uh, our concern is, is if a fire were to get started, it's, I would say, a couple hundred yards, um, immediately downwind from where this RV site will be. If those trees burn, we don't have another, uh, facility within cattle driving distance to house those cowcalf pairs. So that would materially change our cowcalf operation. The second, um, and third items, but certainly, uh, lesser would be, um, trash blowing um, over into our pasture or into the lake. Uh, we also own property immediately south of Quinn. Um, and before we could go out and work that field, we always have to ride our four-wheelers across to go pick up the trash. And then the third item, the trespassing, um, all that separating the property is a, um, barbed wire fence, obviously, just like would be normal within agricultural, um, land use areas. But those are our concerns with allowing, um, individuals that if this was someone building a house that had a vested interest that was going to be in the community, it would be a much lesser concern. But these are people coming to have a good time, whatever that is, to those individuals, and they're gone the next day. Um, so. Questions?
Questions for the speaker? Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant in the audience? Yes, if you would please come forth.
Hello, my name is Dawn Richter.
Okay.
Questions for?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I think of, and I, I'll just be upfront, because I pick on unusual living conditions. It's one of my, scratch my head things. But when I think of a grain bin, first off, is it metal?
Yes.
Did you guys get quite a bit of hail the other, you think, out of the storm Saturday?
No.
I'm thinking what hail would do in that area to somebody sleeping at night. In other words, I don't think your guests would sleep very well at night after a hailstorm of the magnitude that Phillip got. But I'm concerned about the construction techniques to take a, a grain bin and make it a safe and proper place to house people, children, adults, whatever. For instance, if you took the electrical, um, I would think the electrical is going to be a challenge in a metal container.
Um, I had a licensed electrician and a licensed, um, construction person when we did it. We actually did it, um, in 2015 and got a permit. It was my son's senior project. So that's all done up to code.
Is the, most of the wiring in conduit then?
What's that?
In conduit, you know, in pipes?
Um, I believe so, yes. Well, it's like a regu-, I'm sorry. It's like a regular house. You know, it's insulated with the two by four walls. Like, the regular houses don't have it in conduit.
Well, that's true. And then you have sheet rock walls then?
Um, some of them are barn wood and some of them are sheet rock.
Okay.
And to address the other, we do not permit open fires. We also ranch for a living, and we would never, ever want a fire because that would be detrimental to our way of life. There's somebody that's always home or on site, my husband and I, and I have children that live right in Quinn. So there would always be somebody there.
Is there gonna be plumbing brought into the quantity?
If.
Or do you say then addition type of thing?
It would be an addition to it. I don't have a permit for that yet.
Sure. I can understand that. I'm asking questions that you haven't dealt with, Cody, unnecessarily.
Right. And as far as garbage, um, in their field, that has not ever been any of our garbage. That's a problem we have from the town of Quinn. We get it in our pasture too, also. So it blew, you know, blows through our pasture into their pasture. But we've had a big problem with a couple of people on the east side of Quinn that set their garbage out when it's blowing, and then it blows over onto our property also. So. And trespassing, i- if you look, if you look where you drive in, excuse me, to, um, where our grain bins are, um, there's Corrells, um, the dam and another pasture before you get to Papasek's property. It's also fenced off to the west. Um, another pasture that nobody would have access to, um, that borders their property. So where this is at, their property does not. We don't have any fences just right in between it. There, there is other pieces of property. So we don't border just over the fence to their property the way that it's set up. Um, if you see there that the big dam, their property is to the south of that. So you can kind of see where the grain bin is clear up to the north of it. So there is no access at all to their property.
Okay. I need to go back to electrical. I see, I still have a concern about the electrical. When you're talking about taking a house builder and putting electric into it, if your service or one of those outlets has a short, you're gonna electrify your back feet into the entire building. That's how serious a problem that is. I'm not sure in our unified codes that we have a capability of running wire into a steel building. Um, Cody, I'm not sure. And she hasn't been here to make a permit, but that would concern me. Anybody that would touch anything in that.
Well, there's a lot of, uh, farm buildings and shops and everything else that are, are built the exact same way.
No, they've got conduit if they're steel buildings. They surely do. I guarantee you, they have, all the wiring is in conduit, including the service. And there's special things that are done for a steel structure. If it is a pole barn, that's a different case. But there's still places in the pole barn where conduit is used.
Correct.
So I, I mean, I'm concerned about sticking electricity into a quant, uh, uh, storage. And that's a steel, and that whole thing's gonna be backfed with electricity. And that's a steel and that whole thing's gonna be backfed with electricity. And somebody with a heart problem or whatever touch that, they're gonna be laying on the floor.
Mister Chairman. Go ahead.
Question for that. Did I hear you say your son's an electrician?
Yeah, that's what he went to to school for.
Did 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 he do the install? Did somebody else do the install and certify it? Because if you have a certified installer, they have to verify that they're meeting all those code requirements. May maybe that's just the easiest question to ask.
Swift Tech, Swift Tech Electric did the the wiring.
So Swift Tech?
Yes.
Okay.
At the time, my son was not an electrician. He was a senior in high school, but.
So a licensed installer.
Installer put the electricity in, yes, I would never want, I mean.
My son's an electrician too. That's the reason why, maybe I just need to ask that question. I get where Charlie's coming from, but and if you don't mind, Mister Chairman. Charlie, this might answer your question. It may not. It might give you more concern if I tell you this. I I researched a lot about yurts and there's a different type of yurts. There's a tit yurts and there's also yurts that are made from grain bins. You can actually make them pretty sturdy and and pretty nice. I haven't been out to see hers. I drove through Quinn yesterday just to kind of drive by is just to see the area, but. And I think it's possible because they actually sell them on the open market. Yurt versions of grain bins that are that are actually, they have bathrooms in them, they're wired electrical. And and it's a it's a it's a movement in in some groups that that these types of things are being built. For people to actually live a three hundred sixty-five days in as their own primary residence.
Travis, I expressed years ago my same concern about yurts. And if you go into yurts and the ones that already existed without permits. Another thing is is where they're built. If you tried to do this in Rapid City under UBC, I guarantee you the electrical installation would be extremely expensive. Just to meet the UBC requirement. I don't know what ours are. They're pretty new. But there is a situation where being in the city or being in rural is a lot of difference. A lot of people install their own wiring and go to the state, take the test and have the state inspector come. We also have people look the other way with their licenses that are certified when they're installing. In the rural areas, both plumbing and electrical, I'm not picking on one or the other. It happens on a regular basis and I saw it as a contractor. But in this case, an entirely steel building is a concern for me with electricity and how it's installed.
Fair enough. Mister Chair, one last question.
Go ahead.
Cody, does planning and zoning have any problems with Swift Tech as a as a certified contractor to install electrical products?
Not that I'm aware of. And in two thousand, so it was two thousand and fifteen that you put the. So when she's, so that's already existing. When she combines the, she she has plans to use the second grain bin and connect it to the first one. It'll have to meet our international building codes for structure as well. So moving forward and then part it out with the final inspection, you have to have your state licensed. With the state and signed by the inspector prior to us going out there for the final inspection. And this isn't the first grain bin cabin rentals that have come before the planning commission. The Nate Sobuleski for a wreck resort is doing the same thing out by scenic.
Mister Chairman, just one last thing.
But Travis.
Only because the gentleman was talking about trash, I ranch also, I ranch east of New Underwood. So I understand the trouble and the trials that we all have with trash blowing from the the local municipalities into our pastures before we move cattle into them. So I'm right there with you, so I understand that, so I'm not even overlooking that one. I just want you to understand. Thank you very much.
Have a question.
Go ahead.
Last time we brought this up along with the RV campground you're gonna have, my concern was nobody was going to be on site.
No, that that's not true.
Okay.
I I live just right across, just right across the road. We live right there. We can see it from our house.
You can actually see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we can see, I mean, anybody coming in and out of there and somebody's always home. I mean, we've got livestock and animals and and stuff, so there is somebody there all the time.
My question is regards to your check-in procedure. Is it autonomous or do they have to meet with someone on site in in order to get checked in?
Oh, they would have to meet with somebody on site. Yep, I, yep, I would meet with somebody, my husband or I or my kids would meet with anybody that's staying there.
Okay, further questions for the applicant?
Just one. That was gonna be my question too, is how far away you were from the facility? Because I thought at first you said you lived right in Quinn and maybe.
No, I I do not live in Quinn. I live a mile east of Quinn directly across.
I have a little bed and breakfast and the clientele that come in that I've experienced over the past few years. It's it's a clientele that are concerned about garbage, are concerned about being good tenants when they're there. So unless she has a different type of clientele that comes into a setting like that.
I would never want anybody to come in and destroy my property. I mean, like I said, ranching is is our livelihood.
Yep. That was just my two cents on that.
Further questions? Comments? So we have one person who wants to speak in the audience. Thank you very much for your comments. Please come back up, back up, sir.
Mark Papasek again, I guess my comment would be to the on-site portion as Cory had zoomed out here. I would challenge the line of sight comment. They are across the highway. This is the building site of their home. Are they close? Certainly. But are you going to be able to see what is going on when you have these trees in the way? I would challenge that. There's a difference between close and on-site. The second point of clarification that I would make. Would be, and I do agree, Dawn and her family do ranch, which frankly was kind of why we were surprised they wanted to bring individuals in. To this, our property starts right here at this corner. So if a fire were to get started. I don't know where the scale is. This is where our property starts. These are the trees that provide the winter protection for cattle. On the north end of the property, this is all grassland here. And then immediately here, you get into, there's three hundred acres of farm ground that is cut with a stripper header. So right now, the straw is knee-high in that field. So while I understand that we can't always make decisions of of fear of what could happen. If these trees get burned out, it will materially change our operation. But and like I say, the biggest concern I would have with the line of sight comment is that. They are near, I will agree. But this is the house right here. These are the grain bins with trees in the middle. Any questions?
I do. How would they get to that site on that map?
Their their driveway is right here and this is the actual road into where the building site is.
It's straight across, basically?
It is.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. And relatively flat, the problem is, is there's trees throughout here and there's trees throughout here, which is why it's so green right down in here. And it makes it secluded. It would make it a nice break and everything. But the problem is, is the same thing that makes it secluded is the same thing that keeps people from being able to see what's going on. And that would be our concern.
Further questions? Thank you, sir, again for your comments. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash fifteen with seventeen conditions. Is there a motion? Excuse me, number ten would be removed. Is that correct?
Correct.
And number ten is removed because number fifteen will be in place.
Correct, yes.
Noted. I'm sorry.
I will move approval with the exclusion of number ten.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion?
Mister Chair, I've got to note that I'm I'm still opposed to the housing. Unfamiliar people in unusual places and the dangers and the things that go along. There's gonna be an error happen here one of these times and we've already dealt with three unusual housing situations, the yurts, the tents. And now these and whether we've done them before or not, then I don't think we thoroughly reviewed the dangers that involved. Putting people in these situations where they're used to living in their normal home. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no?
No.
Just the one. Motion carries. Item seventeen.
Item seventeen is conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash sixteen is to allow a recreational vehicle park on the subject property. Again, the applicant and landowner is Don and Troy Richter. This was continued from the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two planning commission meeting. For some of the same concerns that were just addressed on the last item. So staff did add conditional, condition sixteen in there, so on this one, condition ten needs to be removed as well. But staff is recommending approval of conditional experiment CU twenty-two dash sixteen.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
I do.
Go ahead.
Cody, number three, all RV dispose of waste through, now would that be the the blue water?
The 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 black water?
No, the 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 RV type. Blue water that.
Correct, any anything that they have in their their. She's providing full hookups. She's gonna have a full septic system that.
That will work for that type of thing.
Yep, so they'll, when they pull up, they'll be hooked to those. And I was mistaken. That condition wasn't, condition ten wasn't included, so condition ten in this one needs to stay.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Further questions for staff? Noting none. Sir, on your speaker request form, you had item seventeen as well. Do you wish to speak on that?
It would be the same concerns.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience who wants to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty-two dash sixteen with eighteen conditions. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion?
Mister Chair.
Go ahead.
Question, quick question, maybe I'm missing it, maybe I'm just trying to find it. Is there no open flame burning on this one as well, or am I missing that?
It's number sixteen.
Number sixteen. Oh, it was all crunched in there. Fair enough, thanks.
Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item eighteen.
Jason Thunison, Deputy Plan Director, agenda item eighteen is comprehensive plan amendment twenty-two dash twelve. To amend the comprehensive plan to change future land use from ranchette district to low-density residential district. And this was continued from the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two meeting. The applicant is Mary Dietrich. Her agent is Howe Land Surveying. Location of the property is one three three eight zero Greyhound Gulch Road. It is four point nine acres currently zoned agriculture district. Existing land use is mixed use and access is off Greyhound Gulch Road. When basing the recommendation, staff does look at current zoning and future land use in the area and those are on the screen. Current is on the left, future land use is on the right. You see current land use, we have identified agriculture, which is light green, rural residential, which is yellow, suburban residential, brown. And open space is dark green. Future land use, you can see on the right-hand side is ranchette in tan, low-density residential in yellow, suburban residential in brown and open space again in dark green. Staff does also take into take into account roads and streets. Greyhound Gulch is a gravelled surface collector that varies in width from twelve to fourteen. Infrastructure in the area, private wells and onsite wastewater treatment systems are common in this area, so no public utilities are available. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant has submitted a layout plan to subdivide the subject property into three separate lots. The applicant has also applied to rezone the property to low-density residential district. The request appears to be in harmony with existing and future land uses in the area and staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan amendment twenty-two dash twelve.
Questions for staff?
Mister Chair.
Go ahead.
When you're looking at the picture, Jason. It looks like there's a residence on thirteen three seventy-seven, a residence on thirteen three eighty. And I can't tell on the other one. And are we doing, in other words, is this all of the four point nine acres or are there? Otherwise, in other words, we're kind of splitting up what already exists?
That's correct, yeah. You can see the the proposed lot configuration on the right-hand side of the screen. She's in a situation where she has a conditional use permit out there now for a kind of a nonprofit organization.
Right.
And her house insurance company will not let her insure her house with that conditional use, that non.
Combined.
Right, so she has to subdivide in order to get homeowner's insurance on her current residence, so this is her way ahead.
That answered my question, thank you.
And that conditional use permit will be reviewed once this takes effect because the zoning district is gonna change.
Additional questions for staff? I believe this is the first time I've ever heard the insurance item. Anybody in the audience who wants to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash twelve. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item eight, item, excuse me, nineteen.
Item nineteen is the subsequent request for rezone. For the same property owner as the previous request, the rezone twenty-two dash thirteen. To rezone four point nine acres from agriculture districts for low-density residential district. The applicant again is Mary Dietrich. Her agent is Howe Land Surveying. Property location is one three three eight zero Greyhound Gulch. It is four point nine acres currently zoned agriculture district. Staff did use the same considerations as the comprehensive plan amendment as far as current and future land use in the area. But that staff recommends approval of rezone twenty-two dash thirteen.
Questions on this item? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of rezone RZ twenty-two dash thirteen. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries, item twenty.
Then item number twenty is rezone twenty-two dash seventeen to rezone twenty-five point zero seven two acres from agriculture district to ranchette district. The owner is Joan McVeigh. The agent is Jim Peterson. Location of the property is east of the intersection of Slate Prairie Road and McVeigh Road. The rezone does involve twenty-five, twenty-five point zero seven two acres currently zoned agriculture district. Existing land use is agriculture. Access is off McVeigh Road and there is special flood hazard area on the property. You can see on the screen the existing lot highlighted on the left and what they're proposing on the right. You can see what's in red here is the area that is requesting to be rezoned. So it doesn't include the entire property. Even the same way as the last request, staff does take into account current zoning districts within one and a half mile. You can see those on the left-hand side of the screen. They do include open space in dark green, agriculture, light green, rural residential in yellow and suburban residential in brown. As well as future land use on the right-hand side of the screen, which includes ranchette in tan, open space, dark green and rural residential in yellow. So you can see the request does fit with the future land use of the area. Staff also took into account roads and streets. McVeigh Road is a twenty-four foot gravelled surface road. As far as infrastructure grows, private onsite wastewater treatment systems are common in the area and that's what is being proposed on the property. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns received. Analysis of the request is that the twenty-five point zero seven two acres is what's being currently proposed to be subdivided. And like I said, the remainder of the property will stay. proposed to be subdivided. And like I said, the remainder of the property will stay agriculture district. That request is preliminary plat twenty-two dash twenty-four, which will also be heard at today's meeting, I believe is the next agenda item. Approval of this request will satisfy a condition of approval and allow the planning process to continue. Future land use within one-half mile of the property identifies several parcels as Ranchet. Existing infrastructure and roads are appropriate for Ranchet zoning district. The request to rezone appears to be in harmony with current zoning, future land use designations, and the current, or in the comprehensive plan viewed at twenty forty. With that, staff recommends approval of rezone twenty-two dash seventeen.
Thank you. Questions on this item?
Staff did also receive an email from the applicant's agent with photos of the property. I don't know if you care to see those, or if you have enough information already.
I looked at the aerial. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? You do, sir? Okay, if you, if there's questions. Thank you, sir.
Chair, I do have a question for the agent.
You do. Sir, if you could please come forth. Again, state your name when you get to the podium.
Jason, good morning, Commissioners Jim Peterson, Attorney.
Jim, we're doing, between the two actions, between the two actions, we're doing just the five lots, and you're leaving the rest as it's currently...
Those will be future phases.
Do you see the direction you're going to head in those yet? Is it going to be similar?
During the layout process, I'd given the staff the ultimate, which was fourteen lots.
All right.
And we were phasing it.
Okay. Thank you. That's the only question I had.
Further questions for the applicant? Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No one else in the audience wishes to speak on this item? With that, staff recommends approval of rezone RZ twenty-two dash seventeen. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty-one.
Agenda item number twenty-one is preliminary plan twenty-two dash twenty-four to subdivide and create lots one, two, three, four, and five of McVeigh Valley subdivision. The owner is Joan McVeigh. The agent is Jim Peterson. Their surveyor is Britain Engineering. Again, the property's location is east of the intersection of Slate Prairie Road and McVeigh Road. Currently the property is seventy-nine-point-three-six acres, zoned agriculture district. Access is off McVeigh Road, and there is one-hundred-year floodplain on the property. So existing conditions on the left, proposed on the right. As it sits today, there is an eleven-by-sixty-one loafing shed built in nineteen fifty, as well as numerous dilapidated agricultural structures built prior to building permit requirements. And there's no onsite wastewater treatment system or utilities. Proposed lots on the right-hand side of the screen, lot one is vacant. It will be five acres. Lot two, also vacant, will be five acres. Lot three, five acres. Four and five are both five acres, all vacant. The remaining balance of HES number six-three-six will contain the eleven-by-sixty-one loafing shed, as well as the numerous dilapidated egg structures, and it will be forty-point-zero-three-seven acres. Request was sent for interdepartmental review. County Highway did state that shared approach easements must be staked out prior to final plat to ensure site distance can be met. Encroaching structures must be removed prior to final plat approval. Register of deeds stated the heading needs, in quotes, "the remainder of HES five-three-six," in quotes, "to be removed or it will become platted into the subdivision." County planning stated that drainage, erosion, and grading planes need to be submitted for the approaches in the floodplain and crossing of the unnamed tributary, or approaches need to be taken off of sassy way. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant has also requested rezone, which you just heard previous to this. The proposed access to the properties will be off of McVeigh Road. The applicant's request appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. And with that, staff recommends approval of preliminary plan twenty-two dash twenty-four with conditions.
Thank you. Questions on this for staff?
Just one, Jason, the dilapidated buildings are the ones that are in the right way.
Correct.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Noting none. Sir, do you wish to speak on this item?
Some clarification points. So those old buildings are in the balance, and we'll be addressing those as we go. They're going to be removed.
Is that, you mean they're not involved with these five lots?
So they're in the balance of the HES there, and...
Are you asking that that condition then be removed from the current ones?
I'm just informing, you know, it was what's happening here, because we'll come right behind here probably with some other phases. And that will include those, and we're either going to burn them, or there's some people that want them for the barn wood. They're very old. I don't know if you've seen the pictures of them, but only part of them are in the road, what is considered the road right away. But that's not really what I wanted to talk about. On the, there is floodplain in here, the FEMA firm maps, and you guys are pretty familiar with those. And, you know, they're usually not real accurate sometimes. So we went ahead and had the flood study done through that whole area there. And the reason I want to point this out, because, and it's different than the firm map. And so I have an engineer's report on all of that. So that will be provided to the people if, as they cross that seasonal, do we have any pictures of that seasonal creek? So there'll be floodplain development permits that'll be needed to create if they're crossing that creek with a culvert and stuff. But we already have the base elevation for the flood and all the cross-sections. So that, all that engineering work will be provided to the, to the people so that they're ahead of the game and know what they're getting into. If, you know...
Has the firm, has the firm map been updated?
We're not, we're not updating the firm map. That'll be the information that you need to do the floodplain development permit. So we're not doing a lawmar. You know, it's another twenty thousand dollars to do that. There really isn't any reason to do that other than to do the federal government's work for them when you guys...
Well, yeah, but if the, I mean, we can't build homes in a zone A. The insurance company...
So really what we're talking about is flood insurance and that kind of thing. So the part that I'm talking about is even if we want to put a culvert through there, we have to have a floodplain development permit. So that data, I'm not necessarily, there, so there's the firm map now. And that's not how the flood actually looks.
Sure.
But we'll be able to provide that to the individuals. So they, if, if they wanted to build in the flood, you know, they just have to be that one foot over, right, and with a floodplain development permit. So they'll have all that data. There's plenty of spots to build outside of the floodway, but we're not doing a lawmar or a floodmap revision.
Okay. Noting that the insurance companies follow the current map.
They will, and then you can prove it out with the data to them. So you can pull it out.
Okay.
And that's done often.
Sure.
Yep.
Additional questions?
No, Mr. Chair, and I wasn't suggesting we take that out of there about the buildings either. I think for future reference, it'll be there for future actions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any additional comments? Questions for the applicant? Noting none, staff recommends approval of preliminary plan PPL twenty-two dash twenty-four with six conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty-two.
Agenda item number twenty-two is rezone twenty-two dash eighteen to rezone eight-point-one-seven-one acres, more or less from agriculture district to Ranchet District. The applicant and landowner is Joseph Therbridge. Their agent, or his agent, is Renner Associates. The location of the property is three-four-one-zero Cavern Road. Currently zoned agriculture district. Access is off Cavern Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. These are what he's proposing to split the lot. The portion of property that is being requested to be rezoned is on the right-hand side of your screen, highlighted in red. Again, staff does take into account current and future land use within one-half mile of the property. The current zoning districts within one-half mile are identified on the screen on the left as dark green, open space, agriculture is light green, rural residential is yellow, planned unit development in blue, highway service in red, general commercial in pink, and suburban residential in brown. And on the right-hand side of the screen, future land use within one-half mile is identified as Ranchet in tan, open space dark, dark green, low-density residential in orange, planned unit development in blue, highway service is red, and suburban residential in brown. Staff also did take into account the roads and streets. Cavern Road is a twelve-foot gravelled surface road. Infrastructure is identified as private onsite wastewater treatment systems, and those are common throughout the area. Request was sent for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the subject properties are currently being platted through the city of Rapid City due to three-mile plating jurisdiction. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property and create lot one, which is eight-point-one-seven-one acres, and lot two, which will be twelve acres of Joseph's subdivision. Future land use within one-half mile of subject identify, subject property identifies several parcels as Ranchet District. Existing infrastructure and roads are appropriate for Ranchet zoning district. Request to rezone appears to be in harmony with current zoning, future land use designations, and the comprehensive plan viewed at twenty forty. With that, staff recommends approval of rezone twenty-two dash eighteen.
Questions for staff?
Just one quick one. Jason, I see that the environmental planner said that there wasn't a wastewater treatment system construction permit, but there was the operating permit. What do you do when you run into that? Do you look at the age of it? I see there's a house or something on it.
Right. So it'd be legal non-conforming. That's typically how...
Understood. Thank you.
...the system for the construction of it was, but then they didn't obtain an operating permit to use it. So...
And then they have to submit every six years or whatever the schedule is, right?
Correct.
Okay. Karen?
Are we just rezoning lot, lot one?
Yes.
Okay. And lot two will remain agricultural?
That's correct.
Okay.
Additional questions? Confirm no one in the audience wishes to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of rezone RZ twenty-two dash eighteen. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty-three.
Agenda item number twenty-three is rezone twenty-two dash nineteen to rezone five-point-zero-five-nine acres from agriculture district to Ranchet District. Property owner is Karen Murphy. The applicant is JV Gulch LLC. The agent is Isaac Almanza. Surveyor is Renner Associates. The location of the property is two-three-eight-zero-zero Highway three-eight-five. Access is off Highway three-eight-five, and there is one-hundred-year special flood hazard area as well as floodway on the property. This is a proposal of what they're looking to do. They are subdividing this property, and I believe that is the next agenda item. So you can see here, existing on the left, proposed on the right. And I apologize, I didn't highlight this property. So what they're looking to do, basically just corner off this portion with the bridge, so they provide access and absorb that into lot one of JV Gulch subdivision. So with that, staff does take into account current and future land use within one-half mile. As you can see, current is on the left, future land use is on the right, starting with current. We did identify low-density residential in yellow, planned unit development in blue, agricultural light green, open space dark green, highway service in red, and low-density residential in yellow. Future land use within one-half mile is identified as low-density residential in yellow, Ranchet in tan, planned unit development in blue, open space dark green, and highway service in red. Staff also did look at infrastructure. Private driveway does take access off Highway three-eight-five. That's appropriate for Ranchet District. Infrastructure is private onsite wastewater treatment system, which is commonly found in Ranchet District as well. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and there were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the subject property is currently being subdivided under minor plat twenty-two dash thirty, which is the next agenda item. Approval of this request will satisfy a condition of approval and allow the plating process to continue. Again, future land use within one-half mile, identified several parcels as Ranchet. Existing infrastructure and roads are appropriate for Ranchet District, and the request to rezone appears to be in harmony with current zoning, future land use designations, and the comprehensive plan viewed at twenty forty. And with that, staff recommends approval of rezone twenty-two dash nineteen.
Thank you. Questions on this item?
Jason, just help me again. If you look at the page where the actual survey drawing is at, you're saying then, based upon what I'm seeing, is there's a triangle on the top of that that's included in this request that I see this lot two are?
So, yeah, if you look at this lot two R...
Right.
Up on the screen, this is the portion of property that's being requested to rezone to Ranchet.
Not all of the rest of the finger?
No, the rest of this...
Okay. I couldn't identify what property we were doing. Thank you.
So the rest of this property will remain agriculture, and that will be absorbed into this larger lot one, which is already agriculture.
And that does go up to the bridge that crosses the stream, you said?
It does. Yeah, it does include that bridge.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Noting none, staff recommends approval of rezone RZ twenty-two dash nineteen. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty-four.
Agenda item number twenty-four is minor plat twenty-two dash thirty to subdivide and create lot one of JV subdivision and lot two R of HES number five-six-three. The owner and applicant is Isaac Almanza. The other landowner is Karen Murphy. Their surveyor is Renner Associates LLC. Again, the location of the property is two-three-eight-zero-zero Highway three-eight-five. It is seven-point-four acres, currently zoned agriculture district. Residential use occupies it today. Access is off Highway three-eight-five, and again, there is one-hundred-year and floodway on the property. Board Commissioners did approve layout plan twenty-one dash fifty-nine on September twenty-first of last year. You can see existing property on the left-hand side of the screen. Again, the proposed is on the right. As it sits today, lot two, last lot H-two of H-three is seven-point-four acres, contains a single-family residence and a detached garage, as well as a twelve-by-nineteen shed and a garage addition with an operating permit for the septic system. The larger lot, proposed lot one, as it sits today, is described also in sections fourteen and twenty-two. It is fifty-two-point-nine-nine acres, contains a single-family residence, as well as a road construction within intersection line permit, stormwater permit, floodplain development permit, and an onsite wastewater treatment system. Proposed lots, lot one of JV Gulch subdivision will become five, fifty-four-point-nine-eight-five acres, contain a single-family residence as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system. Lot two R of HES number five-six-three will become five-point-zero-five-nine acres, will contain the single-family residence, detached garage, twelve-by-nineteen shed, garage addition, and onsite wastewater treatment system. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and there were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is requesting to adjust lot lines. This request application was filed April sixth of this year, therefore the subdivision regulations that were in effect at that time were applied to this request. Under these regulations, the entire sixty-six feet of section line rights of way need to be dedicated and improved by the developer, or variance be obtained waiving this requirement. That is included as a condition of approval. The applicant has also applied to rezone, which you just heard at the previous agenda item, and with that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing land uses in the area. And staff recommends approval.
Questions on this item?
Yeah. Jason, I do have a question. Okay, the existing on the left with the red, where does that square with the thing on the right, the one on the right? Straightwise?
Zoom in here. So you'll see, you can see the previous lot line here.
Right.
It goes straight across. So what they're doing is just portioning off basically on the west side of that bridge, coming down, and more or less what they're doing is getting rid of the access easement that exists to get to lot one now, and just absorbing that portion of property into lot one and granting an access easement to lot two R.
So Karen Murphy's bridge is part of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Additional questions?
Just one. Then I see the acreage does match what we took the other action on.
It does. Yes.
Further questions? To confirm, no one in the audience wishes to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of minor plat MPL twenty-two dash thirty with five conditions. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty-five. Item 25.
Agenda item number 25 is minor planned unit development amendment 22-09. To amend the existing Hart Ranch planned unit development to allow a warehouse to be utilized as an event center. The applicant is Hart Ranch Camping Resort Club. Their agent is Tim Schnabel. Site location is 23756 Arena Drive, involving 195.52 acres. Currently zoned planned unit development. Existing land use is RV sites and a riding arena. Access is off Arena Drive, and there is 100-year special flood hazard area on the property. So the PUD for Hart Ranch was established in 1983, and there have been multiple amendments to this through, since that time. What they're looking to do, they applied for a building permit to put a warehouse out here, and kind of what they want to do now that they've got that warehouse built is open that up and use it for events and things like that, supporting their rodeo that happens on the arena just here to the north of it. You can see this is where the existing structure is now. They recently got a building permit, so I don't have an updated photo that shows the constructed facility yet. Some of the events that they're looking to have out there, just a stage for entertainment, weddings, vendor areas, concession areas, antique car shows, annual RV shows, and annual wine and beer festival. And the applicant has stated that quiet hours will be in effect consistent with those of the existing resort. There will not be a kitchen or plumbing in the structure. Portlets will be used as a means of onsite wastewater disposal, and access doors will be equipped with panic bars and emergency lighting signage will also be installed, and that is addressed as a condition of approval. Request was now for interdepartmental review. The city of Rapid City didn't state the subject property borders Spring Creek Road, which is identified as a principal arterial in the city's major street plan. Went through and classified Arena Drive as a commercial street, which requires a minimum right-of-way of 70 feet. The city's future land use plan identifies the appropriate future land use of the property as rural residential, with a future greenway slash floodplain conservation overlay. Emergency services stated that the building will need a physical address prior to use, and that is included as a condition of approval. Current events on the property utilize an open field south of the proposed event venue for parking. This arrangement appears to provide adequate parking for venue operations. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land use is already approved in the PUD.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Just one, Jason. Okay, no kitchen, no plumbing and all that. What they've done in the past, they had it catered. I mean, obviously, they've had food in this thing, in the area probably, and it would be the same thing, they'll just cater it inside this thing, but there'd be no plumbing and...
Right, there's no kitchen, there's no plumbing or anything like that, so whatever they have to provide there would have to be through vendors.
Okay.
Additional questions?
I have a question. And I probably just need some education here. Is this within three miles for the city of Rapid City?
It is.
It is, okay. That's what I needed to know.
Further questions? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of minor planned unit development amendment PU 22-09 with 17 conditions. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Motion in second. Well, yeah.
I did.
Karen, I think there were two up front.
We were close. Either would.
I appreciate the enthusiasm, guys, I really do.
I would like to discuss one thing. You know, if we had a good neighbor award through the years, these folks have really tried to maintain and do right by their property requirements that we've had through the county. And we darn near should have a good neighbor award once in a while, because I think they ought to be pointed out at that. They stay on top of these things, so it's nice to see that.
Additional comments? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 26.
Agenda item number 26 is conditional use permit 22-26 to allow an accessory structure, a pole barn slash shop building, as a primary structure on the subject property. The applicant is Tubear Racing LLC, under ownership of Larry Tuber. His agent is Renner Associates. Location of the property is 5704 Pioneer Circle. It is currently 13.06 acres, zoned rural residential district. Zoning ordinance lists seven criteria the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They are on the screen. I will read staff's responses, starting with number one. No, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use or enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. A garage is a residential use which conforms with the residential uses in the area. Number three, no, the requested use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of surrounding property in the area. Number four, yes, access is off Pioneer Circle. Number five, yes, the requested use should not significantly impact traffic congestion. Number six, yes, the property is zoned rural residential district, and accessory structure is a primary. Use is allowed with an approved conditional use permit. And lastly, number seven, yes, the future land use of the property is rural residential district, allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. As it sits today, there is a single-family residence on the property built in 1989, as well as a 30-by-40 detached garage, a 50-by-69 equipment shop building, as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system. This property is being subdivided through the city of Rapid City due to the three-mile plating jurisdiction, and you can see what they're proposing up here on the screen. They're proposing Lot 1RA, and that will contain this large pole barn garage structure and the subdivided portion on Lot 1R2 will, or, yeah, 1R2, should be 1RB, I think this has changed since then, will contain the single-family residence, the 30-by-40 detached garage, as well as the onsite wastewater treatment system. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County highway stated that approach permits must be filed for the existing approaches. That's included as a condition of approval. County addressing stated that the shop would require a separate address, and it must be posted on the structure so that it is visible from Pioneer Circle in accordance with Penity County ordinance number 20. Rapid City Planning Department stated that the adjacent roads are not identified on the city's major street plan. City's future land use designates the subject property as forest conservation area. Staff's analysis of the request, again, is that it is being platted through the city of Rapid City due to the three-mile plating jurisdiction. And again, proposed Lot 1RA will only contain the 50-by-96 equipment shop building, and that's the reason for the request today. Staff has sent notice to the property owner that the current operating permit is required for an onsite wastewater treatment system for the existing structure or existing single-family residence on Lot 1R2, and that is included as a condition of approval. There are approximately 80 lots taking access off Clarkson Road, south of the intersection of Clarkson Road and Clarkson Lane. Clarkson Road is a dead-end road system. The applicant did get approval of a variance to exceed more than 40 dwelling units on a dead-end road system, and that happened last Friday at the board of adjustment meeting. With that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 22-26 with conditions.
Questions for staff?
This is a photo of that structure on that property. This is the single-family residence on the proposed lot to the south, and this is the structure that will remain.
So when he got the variance, was there, was there like a deed restriction that puts it on there, that additional living quarters can't be put on there?
No, so that variance basically was to approve him to build a house on this lot, on this proposed lot that doesn't have a house.
Okay.
In the meantime, we have to have a conditional use permit for the accessory structure to be a principal.
But what is the city of Rapid City saying with regards to the 40-unit rule?
This was kind of a complicated issue, because he was, I don't have the entire map of, well, so these two lots here, if you bear with me on the screen, these two lots were combined, your one action, these two lots, or this one lot is being split. So as far as the city was concerned, there was no net increase or decrease in the amount of proposed lots taking access off that dead-end road system, so they didn't hear it at all.
Okay.
And in general, I think, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, the board of commission kind of looked at it that way. He consolidated the two lots into one lot, and that's when he wants to split. So he goes from three lots. When it's all said and done, he has three lots.
No doubt. Okay. Further questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
But there are 80 lots that are off of this single...
Approximately 80 lots. So we got Clarkson Lane, if you look on the map here, up here. From that point south, there's approximately 80 lots in this area.
So, that would seem to be more than 40, right?
Yes, sir.
And are we supposed to be concerned about 40, or is that just something, is that a gesture we make? I don't, I don't remember the last time we stopped any kind of development because of this concern. I, you know, I'd rather have us approach it more seriously or not include it, because it seems it's a bit of a charade in a way. I mean, if there were 120 houses off a single road, would that be okay? But, I mean, I'm a little stunned by the reference to it. Maybe I'm getting jaded about this, but...
Right, and I understand the frustration. I share it. So we did meet with the fire protection gurus of the city and in the county to ask, you know, is this 40-lot rule even realistic? And from our standpoint, there are two different concerns. You know, you have something like Bradsky Road, where there's a flood hazard concern, where the bridge could be washed out, but then in areas like this, we have the issue of wildland fire. And so they said, honestly, at this point, it's just risk mitigation. So what we did with the subdivision to allow these variances to go forward last Friday is that the owner has to enter into a wildland risk mitigation plan with us and have that approved through the county before he can get a building permit for any of those lots. So in meeting with the county and city fire, that's what they, that's what the recommendation was, you know, they don't think it's realistic to stop building out there. They're more concerned with the width of the roads, and if they can get their equipment in as people are egressing the area, so...
So, if I may ask, you say a fire mitigation plan. Seems to me that could cover a lot of ground, or it could cover very little ground. Is there some kind of standard?
We do have a pretty standard mitigation plan that Jerome has been working with to develop, has to do with removing fuels and brushes from around that property. And Mr. Tuber, specifically for this request, he pointed out that he does actively engage in that, and you can see, and he pointed out slash piles here on the property, that he hadn't had a chance to burn this year because the weather just wasn't favorable for it, but, you know.
We had all this concern by this gentleman here out by Quinn over his cattle, and maybe a little, you know, wildland fire out there, which I understand and appreciate what he said, but here we have people, some concentration of population compared to the cow-calf population out of Quinn, but, so I would hope that this mitigation would be a rather vigorous approach, because there's no other alternative. I don't see a lot of opportunities to, you know, there doesn't seem to be a fire station out there, and so I think we should take it seriously if we're going to continue to mention it, I guess is the point I'm trying to make. And I appreciate that, that additional information about the mitigation plan, but I would hope we continue to do that.
Yeah, and we are still looking at that 40-lot rule to see if that's realistic, or if there's some way that we can separate that based on the hazards.
Right.
Maybe there's a better number that we can come to for that, or a 40 is just what we're going to be stuck with.
Mr. Chair?
More to come on that.
Go ahead, Charlie.
More back to this section. If I remember right, and I can easily be corrected, this development also occurred prior to, or was laid out prior to our 1975 planning and zoning due to the court cases where we actually took off. And that layout has a lot to do with the 40 rule on this, and I don't believe, and the commissioner can correct me, we also don't maintain the roads, which, which, if I remember right, and that was part of the original, and that's why there hasn't been any move to ever modify that road to allow for additional fire mitigation type actions on the road. But that's my understanding at this point on this particular one that has 40 or more.
So, to answer your question, I don't know if we maintain or not. Do you know, I would typically defer to Joe, in that case, to know if we maintain those roads. I'm not 100% on that one. Are you pulling up the map to show what roads we maintain?
Yeah.
It looks like, Mr. Tuber, you know?
No, I'm not Mr. Tuber, I'm the resident out there, and the county does maintain both Clarkson Road and Pioneer Circle.
Okay.
It does those two.
On Pinkhorn Road, it's a, they've got a road district.
Okay.
So, yeah, I know there's road districts and stuff. I just, before I say yes to something, I want to...
Thank you, Commissioner, but that helps.
Additional questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Karen.
I drove out there yesterday to look at this site, and it surprises me that this building was approved seven years ago. It's not very attractive, and it's in a residential area, so that was just a comment.
I do have a speaker request form for this item. Mr. Bill Coulson.
Sorry, Bill, for getting you confused. I apologize.
No, 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 that's, that's fine. That's fine. Good morning, good commissioners. Thank you for the time, and I appreciate your service very, very much. I know that you've heard from a lot of residents over the last few months about what's going on, what Dr. Tuber is doing in our area, and I'd just like to say that, again, my name is Bill Coulson. I built my home out there in 1979. Before that time, both my parents and my in-laws lived in that area, and we recognize that it is a low-density residential area, and Dr. Tuber doesn't spend a lot of time communicating with neighbors about what his plans are, and I know that that's not a requirement, but it certainly would be a courtesy. I mean, we hear about things when the signs are posted, that meetings like this are going to take place, and we've tried to be present for those things. My concern is that we don't know what Dr. Tuber's plans are for the future. One thing leads to another, and while I'm not particularly concerned about how this is zoned for this particular barn building, you're right, it's, it's not an attractive facility, for sure. Most of the work that Dr. Tuber has done in our area has been well-constructed. I'll say that for him. Our concern is that we're proud of where we live, and there are other communities in the area, such as Custer and Hill City, that are putting limits on vacation rental homes. Dr. Tuber, between vacation rental homes and full-time residential facilities or homes on this, our development area, there's eight of them. One's still under construction, which is just across the meadow from where I live, and all we're asking as neighbors is, when is enough, enough? When is enough enough? We're proud of where we live. We're proud of our relationships with each other as neighbors. We have a very small water company that provides water, not to all of those owned by Dr. Tuber, but to many, and it has limited capacity. And at some point, I worry that, that some action will be taken to try to insert more water permits. It's a not-for-profit, a private not-for-profit, so that's probably not responsible, but we'd be forced probably to hire legal counsel to help us with that, if it comes down to that, and we're worried about it. I'll be honest with you, we're worried about it. So that's why, I wanted to be here last Friday, but was out of town, so couldn't be here for that meeting, and maybe my comments are not quite in line with what's being proposed today, but I just think it's continually important for you to understand how those of us that have been there for a long time are feeling about not just what's happening in our neighborhood, but the relationships in our neighborhood. So, thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for the speaker? Sir, thank you very much for your comments. Additional questions, comments on this item? Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 22-26 with nine conditions. Is there a motion? No motion one way or the other?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Jason, where we're at with what we've approved already for the board of commission, what would that do to this particular piece of land, if they don't allow that structure to be there? If they don't allow that structure to be there?
Well, to allow this accessory structure to be a primary residence, it just creates the conformance with the zoning ordinance is really all it does. It doesn't stop him from building a single-family residence on the property because the variance to do that was already approved on Friday.
Right. And did you say this is primary residence? I thought this is primary structure.
This is primary structure, but.
It's like building a garage ahead of time.
Right, so similar to the previous request that we heard for Susan Murray, the property is being platted through the city of Rapid City. This will more or less bring it into compliance with our zoning ordinance once that plot's filed with the Register of Deans. I mean, we got approval, like I said, last Friday to put a residence on that property.
Okay. Let me throw out some feedback here. I guess I'm not super excited about additional homes out there. However, I understand, because we've had these throughout the, more or less in the Black Hills portion of Pennington County. But we've had these scenarios in the past where we've had these platted subdivisions, one way or another, that have created the excess of our forty unit rule. And I realize that forty is an ambiguous number that was drawn and that's the line in our sand that we've been using. So I'm not super excited about that. But I also recognize that there's things that can be done to accommodate those things. And so the fact that they swapped those lots did not increase the density out there. If the density was going to be increased, then I would not be okay with this. That being said, if they have a platted lot, if, it's my understanding that he can come in and get a building permit for something, and this is what Mr. Lester referred to before, he can come in and get a building permit on a lot if it's there. And that's basically by right. There is no stopping them. So just because I don't necessarily like it doesn't mean I think that we should go against this or not vote for this. So with that being said, I'd make the motion to approve this simply because I want this board to vote up or down on these items and not pass them along to the Commission without our thoughts on the matter.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Go ahead, Charlie.
The reason I would is I'd also like to advise, under discussion, I'd like to advise these folks to be very aware of the Vacation Home Rental Committee that the Board of Commissioners has put together. And these sort of questions and concerns need to be addressed to those members. They are working hard at trying to get to the bottom of these sort of things, one piece at a time. Would that be a good way to put it? Making one little action at a time. And the direction they've taken, I think is very positive at this point. So I think some of these people would be surprised at what they get for responses, just sitting in on one. So I would second that based on this, this property owner does have the right to have that building there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Lester.
And to further your point on that one, Jason, just to put it out there so that everyone's aware of what has transpired from the Board of Commissioners' side of it, before he consolidated the lots and trying to get this one done, how many homes could he have built up there?
He had three lots, so he could have three houses.
How many can he still do now with all the adjustments? How many can he do?
Three lots, three houses.
Yeah, we're still the same number. So if we didn't do anything, we were just trying to allow him to readjust everything. So I think that's why moving forward with this particular one, it didn't change the density out in that area. He could have already done three.
Further discussion?
I have a hypothetical question. Let's say we approve this. And since we probably aren't going to enforce the forty units on a dead-end road system, he could come and subdivide this lot?
No. I would not be, I would not, I personally, I'm not speaking for anyone else but myself, I would not be in favor of the subdivision. The only reason that I think this should move forward is because he combined lots in order to split these lots for a net zero increase in the area.
So to answer your question, Commissioner McGruder, this is in the city's three-mile, so all subdivision would go through the city. If they created a lot and wanted to waive their forty lot rule, they could do that with an exception and move it right along. The only thing that the owner would have to do would be to get a variance through our office to put a single-family residence on that. And at that point, that would go to the Board of Adjustment for approval.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Travis.
I can't speak for the Board of Commissioners either, but I think if you did add another lot in there in that aspect, I think it'd be a lot harder sale to the Board of Commissioners. Like you pointed out, he consolidated and then split, so there was no net gain. I get it. Technically, he consolidated two units, so I guess it went smaller. And then he split after he consolidated, so then it went higher. But in reality, it's, that's the process, but he didn't gain any more lots out there. Trying to split what he's got now would increase the total lots that we, you know, where it's already set.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So the city of Rapid City would make a judgment as to how much additional subdivision there would be out there in the future?
It's in their jurisdiction.
So we can hope that maybe they would.
Now whether the Board of Adjustment approves to put a house on that lot is a separate issue, though.
Okay, okay.
It's, yeah, so Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office, I just want to clarify that we do have control insofar as whether we approve the variances or not. So if those variances are not approved, they can't build a house out there. Just because they have a lot doesn't mean that they get to build a house. And these people know that this is in place. When they go to subdivide, all of the agents are aware of the forty lot rule. They just continue to ignore it.
So the developer would come and get a variance from the county?
Yes.
And then subdivide?
No, so they typically go to plat first. I don't know why. But they go to plat first and then the city makes it a condition that they get a variance from the county to the forty lot rule.
Okay, so the city would have, would have some veto there, is what you're suggesting?
Technically, yes. I mean, it's my opinion that I, I guess my preference would be that I wish that the people would come and get their variance first and then go to the city. Because the city, I don't think that they've ever denied anybody under their forty lot rule out in the county. Maybe they have in the city, but they grant that exception pretty liberally.
We don't get any help anywhere, do we? I'm a little concerned about this, you know, and I appreciate people wanting to take advantage of their land and property, of course, but I.
And the great thing is, they, I mean, if they build a second ingress and egress, they can put as many houses out there as they want.
True, right.
So. I mean, I know that that's a big sell, but if you want to put a ton of houses out there, then put another ingress and egress. There is a way to get around the forty lot rule, and that's to build another road.
Of course, yeah.
So.
We all understand that, but it so seldom happens that it's almost a ghost in the room, so to speak.
It's one of those things that eventually you have to put your foot down or it's just going to keep happening, so.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Didn't this Commission just continue one for a gentleman that, out in the Bradsky area, over the same, came in and he's waited for years to build his house?
I would prefer not to discuss other items, but I can tell you there are.
We've looked, all I'm bringing up, that's a good point. Thank you, Mr. Chair. But we've looked at this before and we've gone by what the existing procedures have been.
Numerous times in the county, yes. This has been reviewed at various locations. I'd agree with that comment.
Mr. Chair, what is the minimal lot size out in that? It's low-density residential, is it?
Three acres.
Three, that's what I thought. So that could go into three different parcels.
Right.
Additional questions? Conversation? Noting none, motion in second has been made for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no?
No.
No.
Two noes, motion carries. Item twenty-seven.
Item number twenty-seven is conditional use permit 22-24 to allow a caretaker slash manager's residence on the subject property. Applicant and landowner is Justin Devaney, PDQ Construction Incorporated. Location of the property is approximately five hundred feet from the intersection of Highway sixteen and Mill Iron Drive. It is 1.03 acres, currently zoned Highway Service District. It is vacant of any land use and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Much like similar requests, the zoning ordinance lists seven criteria the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They are on the screen. I'll read staff's responses, starting with number one. No, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the property or of the public. Number two, no, this conditional use request should not change the highway service use of the property and thus should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Number three, yes, the requested use could affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. The requested conditional use permit is, conditional use is not in harmony with existing established uses in the area. Number four, yes, access is off Mill Iron Drive. The property will be served by a well and onsite wastewater treatment system. Number five, yes, the requested use should not impact traffic ingestion. Number six, no, the property is zoned Highway Service District. The manager's residence, a manager's residence is allowed in the district with a conditional use permit to serve an established use by right in the district. Lastly, number seven, no, future land use of the property is rural residential district, which allows for a single-family residences on, as a primary use. A manager's residence is a secondary use that is not allowed in a residential district. As I mentioned, the subject property is currently vacant of any structures. However, there is a building permit that is in the approval process right now for a sixty-by-one-hundred-and-fifty-foot warehouse, and that is currently under review. The warehouse is not in allowed use in the Highway Service District. There is an onsite wastewater treatment system permit that is also in the works and it's currently under review by the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. The county planning staff did note that a construction business is not a use by right in a Highway Service District. Staff's analysis of the request is that the owner of PDQ Construction Incorporated, the applicant indicated to staff that the building will house his construction company and he will store construction equipment outside of the building. Construction business is not a use by right in a Highway Service District. Uses that are more appropriately fit in a commercial district are prohibited in highway service districts. An established use by right is needed to determine whether it is use, whether it is a use that requires a manager slash caretaker residence. And at this time, there is not an established use by right on the property that meets the uses by right in the Highway Service District. Staff discussed this request with the applicant. It indicated that staff would not support the requested use because it does not meet the requirements of our zoning ordinance. With that, staff recommends denial of conditional use permit 22-24.
Questions for staff?
I have one. Does Mr. Devaney actually own this property now?
I believe it's owned by him, under his LLC PDQ Construction.
It's unusual for us to get a, normally the applicant would be in the audience to talk about his position on this compared to staff's recommendation. So this one's a little bit, sort of an odd one for me. He wanted this to come to the board regardless of the fact that you guys were not going to be in agreement with it and recommend denial.
Right, and I believe Brittany had that communication with him. This is her staff report and, yeah, he has not showed up today.
Okay.
Was he expected to? I mean, didn't he say he was going to?
That I don't know.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Jason, your basis for denial really didn't matter whether it was the caretaker, it was, or the warehouse. It was mostly on the warehouse itself.
Yeah, it all kind of boils down to a use hasn't been established on the property, so we can't recommend approval of a caretaker residence if we don't know what the use of the property is going to be. And all indications are that it's going to be a commercial use on the property, which we can't support anyway.
Well, further questions?
If you have a candy company on one side and you've got an event setter on the other side, this doesn't appear to fit at all.
No, it doesn't.
Additional questions? Concerns?
So this is a construction company.
Correct.
If he stored most everything inside, its presence would be no different than, say, somebody who had a retail tire business and stored all these tires inside. And it is technically a retail business. Most contractors are retailers in a sense. I mean, if we're going to, not, I mean, in terms of defining the business. But now he wants to store things outside, which to me, I find that distracting, particularly from construction companies. Pretty soon you've got tons of equipment and old forms and so forth. So I'm kind of sympathetic to his situation in a way, but I normally comply with these things that I'm enthusiastic about, good definitions of what should and shouldn't be. But I see this as a bit of a gray area. And so, but his absence speaks something, tells me he's perhaps not that concerned about it. So I'm not going to lose any sleep and I'll probably oppose it then.
Additional comments? Questions? Staff's recommendation is for denial of conditional use permit CU 22-24. Is there a motion?
Still move?
Second.
Motion in second for denial. Further conversation? Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Before we get started on the last item, I was wondering if we could take a five-to-ten-minute recess. Let's, everyone will start back up at eleven fifteen. Okay. Item twenty-eight.
Co-sac environmental planner. Item twenty-eight is ordinance amendment OA 22-01. It is to add section 321, Hard Rock Mining, to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. This has been heard in front of the Planning Commission several times. The last time was on May 23rd. I think I made the corrections that the Planning Commission was looking at seeing. So staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment 22-01. And if it's approved at today's meeting, it'll go on the July 5th, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay, before I open it up to speaker request forms, is there any comments from the membership? Okay. We'll go to the first speaker request form. It's from Lily, it's starting. Thank you for waiting so long in the meeting.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I have been watching you in action a lot lately and I'm impressed by how well you do at handling a lot of material in a relatively quick time. I'm here today to talk about the proposed Hard Rock Mining Ordinance. I brought some new information with me that I think may be important to you and I wanted to basically present that because I have written comments on a much earlier version of the ordinance. One thing is that attached to the end of the draft ordinance in your packet was a page on groundwater monitoring, which it says was provided at the May 23rd meeting by a member of the public. I don't know who that member of the public was, but I did want to express my support for having something on groundwater monitoring in the ordinance. I also brought you a map which was circulated and this is important to, four words in the ordinance. And what it shows is the Custer County on the southern part, Pennington County on the northern part. And something that has changed just in the last month is that there are now companies looking for lithium, to mine lithium, in Custer and Pennington Counties. So the blue claims and the orange claims are from a map that we've prepared of all, we, that I've prepared, of all the registered mining claims that exist in the Black Hills per the Bureau of Land Management's database. So those are the official mining claims. The red and the pink are two lithium companies. What they have said, they're from their maps, what they have said they want to explore for lithium in the central Black Hills. So what struck me in terms of your duties is that the line across the. Hills. So what struck me in terms of your duties is that the line across the middle which divides the two counties, you'll notice that some of the Irish metals claims are above the county line. They're in Pennington County. And the reason this is concerning to me is that the draft hard rock mining ordinance that you have in front of you excludes pegmatite minerals. And lithium and the form they want to explore for them and hopefully mine for them in Pennington County are pegmatite minerals. In other words, they are hard rock minerals. They're mined using a large open pit usually, and so it's, it's directly relevant to what you have in front of you. And the ordinance excludes pegmatite minerals in the opening paragraph and in the definitions in item eleven. So I wanted to draw that to your attention and make sure that you have the opportunity to edit that so that pegmatite minerals like lithium would be included in this ordinance, because I think that's important.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. Just so I understand, um, pegmatite comes from a hard rock?
Sometimes. In, in the case of this lithium, pegmatite basically means hard rock.
Okay, so how, how does, how is it specifically, so it's, it's not included, but then in the definition, it, the definition of hard rock mining operation includes the development of extraction of a mineral from its natural occurrence on the affected land, and it goes through the mining of surface operation in situ, tailing piles, et cetera. But then it, it excludes sand, gravel, or rock to be crushed. So I'm, I'm confused on.
Eleven, item eleven, definition of mineral. That sounds like you might be looking at twelve.
Okay.
Item eleven says, substance with economic value, et cetera, other than the following: water, oil, gas, sand, gravel, and then it includes pegmatite minerals. So pegmatite minerals are excluded from the definition.
So, but, but regarding lithium, if it was coming through a hard rock mine or, or a pegmatite mine, it would come through under the other ordinance?
Yeah, so Citi-Sac Environmental Planner, pegmatite materials are, or minerals are actually covered under the aggregate mining, both in the state of South Dakota and in our three twenty aggregate ordinance. So it's still covered. It's just covered under the old ordinance, or not the old ordinance, section three twenty, which is in line with what the state requires.
So depending on what ore would be the basis for that, it would, it would fall underneath this ordinance or the aggregate?
Correct. If they were, if they were mining pegmatite materi, like minerals or material, they'd still have to get a hard, they'd still have to get a mining license. It would just be under the aggregate mining license, not under the hard rock mining.
Okay. Does that?
My question is whether those, the regulations for the aggregate is similar to stronger than, looser than the proposed hard rock?
It's what, it follows the state requirements, which is what, we can't be any stricter than the state, and we're not going to step on there. Or they occupy that field. That's what they set it, set it apart as, so that's what we follow.
What, what is the, what is our ordinance number for aggregate?
Three twenty.
So, I guess the answers to your questions would be in section three twenty.
Sounds like it, yes.
Yes. Great question.
Thank you, but the groundwater issue, mining issue is still a live issue. And if they have any questions, I'll come back up.
Okay, thank you very much. Cody, I have a question regarding the groundwater. And I have, I have an assumption that this is going to come up again with some of the other speakers, because I reviewed the, all the, the items that had been noticed in the past. There was some language in here regarding water, and it's my understanding that that was specifically removed because the, of the, um, the, the D A N R controls that aspect of the mining and the groundwater associated with mining. Is that correct?
Correct. And so under, uh, staff added under section G, the general requirements for the mining operations, that all operations must follow all local, state, federal regulations for water quality. That includes groundwater and surface water.
Okay. Megan's going to say something.
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney, and I just wanted to clarify, the reason why we worded it that way is because there are so many rules. So it's easier to just put a sentence like that saying you have to be in compliance with all federal, state, local law, because if we put all of the statutes in there, I mean, there would be hundreds of them. So it just is not possible. So we just put kind of a carte blanche sentence in there, so.
Okay. Also, I'm guessing it'll come up later, too. There's also the question last time of the socioeconomic impact study. When you look at the state codified law, the state actually will determine if the, the Board of Minerals and their D A N R staff, if a mining operation would economically impact the area. At that point is where they would require socioeconomic impact study. So the state would determine if that's actually required or not.
Okay, thank you. It was my understanding that one of the speakers are, that was on the Zoom, had to leave early from the meeting, and so we were gonna essentially list those comments that were listed, that were given to us in, in written form. If you could come up and list those quick.
Joan Martin with the Commission Office. This is a public comment that came in on Zoom. This is Carla Ray Marshall. I have another meeting at eleven, but I'd like to make a comment on the HR MO AO twenty-two oh-one. I'd like to echo what one of the commissioners said in a previous item, which was, approach this more seriously. I recommend that Pennington County also takes this HR MO more seriously. Under the EPA Office of Wastewater, hard rock mining is generally defined as the extraction of metals such as copper, gold, iron, lead, magnesium, silver, uranium, zinc, and non-fuel minerals such as asbestos, gypsum, phosphate rock, sulfur, by surface or underground mining methods. I would recommend each of our commissioners would take a tour of the wharf mine to see the destruction that gold mine has caused to the landscape. That land will never be reclaimed. Now you have not, now you have not taken us seriously and have totally ignored those who gave comments to put out protections to the land and water in this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. The next speaker request I have is on Zoom, and it's Mr. Bell.
Okay, so let me fire up my video. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. My name is Richard Rick Bell. I live here in Rapid. I'm a registered professional engineer who has more than forty years of experience working on hazardous waste and remediation projects all over the world. I thank you for allowing citizens such as me to participate in this ordinance-making process and setting up this Zoom call so I could do so. I'm reading a written testimony. I would like it entered into the record, so I'll send a copy via email to Ms. Joan Martin. Is that the correct place to send it?
Is that where you want it sent, Cody? Yes, sir.
Okay. So I have attended several of your hearings in the past about this newly proposed hard rock mining ordinance for more than two years, and I understand your keen desire to get it over the goal line and move it on to the full commission. I know that you're frustrated that it's taking so long, but believe me, there's no one more frustrated about the process and how it's transpired than me. And I wanted to explain in a little more detail the nature of my frustration. And I may modify this a little bit based on earlier testimony, but at, at the meeting on the twenty-third, I came before the commission with three requests, and I don't believe any of these are adequately addressed. So I'm covering them again today. And first, I strongly believe that the socioeconomic study that's previously struck from item four of section F, the hard rock mining application, be reinstated. I brought this up in May, but you conveniently skirted the issue. Even Lawrence County Hard Rock Mining Ordinance, number sixteen oh-three, that was used as the basis for our Pennington County ordinance, two years ago when we started this process, contains a section that addresses the need for such a study for large rock, for large-scale mining operations. And I know it was previously stated by the attorney that we, we have adequate protections in the state, but I think that residents of Penny County deserve to be informed of such issues, and it would be addressed by such a study. And I think that leaving it out of the ordinance as a required part of the application is a mistake. So I, maybe we could have, after I'm done with this testimony, have the legal team address why they think it's adequately covered under state regulations and why the county can't be more stringent than state. I see in many other areas where local regulations are more stringent than state regulations, and I think that needs to be the case in, in this case. Second, in section H, we already mentioned the groundwater issue that was in additional requirements. I'm sorry, I'm in section eight. Number two is second, additional requirements for hard rock mining operations was, number one, buffer zone waivers. And your arbitrary reduction in May to reduce the minimum distance from a hard rock mining operation from, located from all exterior lines from fifty feet to two hundred feet, I'm sorry, from two hundred down to fifty, is not protected, protective of nearby residents. I measure, I mentioned this in last month's meeting, and again, totally ignored. The commission staff should not only go back to at least two hundred feet, but provide the justification for why the five hundred feet that was in previous drafts was changed and keeps being reduced. Maybe it's more appropriate to have one by for small-scale mining operations, another for large-scale, but clearly more discussion is warranted in this area. Third, I commented last month on section eight, number two, the groundwater monitoring. That was completely struck and not only, I believe, should be reinstated, but also be improved by a number of edits that I submitted. But now your draft does sort of address it, and it says surface and groundwater operations must follow all local, state, and federal regulations for water quality. But this is overly simplistic. We know that existing state and federal regulations have not been able to protect surface and groundwater from mining operations in the Black Hills. So I think it's clear that I, I'd like to know why PennCo thinks it doesn't have the authority to pass more stringent local regulations. You have a gold, golden opportunity to do so here, and I think it would protect the local water and health and safety, health and safety of county residents. And I think it should be strengthened. Planning the zoning should do so before passing this ordinance on to the whole commission. Lastly, I wanted to expand on the lack of transparency issue that I brought the last time when I was speaking before the council, or before the commission on the twenty-third. As I've said, I've been following this ordinance and its various versions for more than two years, having attended many of these meetings in person or via Zoom. And what I have observed, and what appears to be happening, is that a number of concerned citizens makes constructive suggestions on how the ordinance can be improved, and then only a few, if any, of these suggested changes are actually made. Instead, whole sections are dropped. My experience is that there have not been many mining proponents who attend these meetings and suggest, and suggest changes to be made. So my question for the commission and the staff are, how are these decisions made? How can it be that such drastic edits, such as dropping whole sections, can be made without any public input? My only conclusion is that there are mining companies who are visiting privately behind the scenes between the hearings to make their suggestions as to how this ordinance can be made more palatable to them. Maybe they are saying things like, please reduce the minimum distance of mining operations that can be located from property lines, or don't make us do a socioeconomic study. That's too burdensome. Oh, and while you're at it, please just get rid of that whole groundwater monitoring section. That's too onerous. So the commission and its staff have, need to provide the justification as to why these drastic changes are being made between meetings. For example, if you were to come to us and said, listen, we talked to Lawrence County and the need for doing a socioeconomic study here, and the issues they're facing and told us about, and we looked into it, and here are the ways we think it could be better addressed, but no, instead you decide to just drop a whole section with no discussion or explanation as to why. Perhaps you are hoping that no one will notice. Well, I for one would like to challenge you on these edits that have the effect of watering down this proposed ordinance. I would like to, commission, to provide explanations for each and every one of these changes and say that you've lost my trust in this process until that happens. And while I'm at it, I'd like to register complaint for the record that your website dedicated to this ordinance, and I'll, I'll show the precise link in, in, in my written testimony, but it's not up to date. The last thing there references a twenty-nineteen draft, and the link to the comments that have been submitted through the end of October sixth of twenty-nineteen does not work. I think you should look into updating that link as well. So those are my comments, and I'll stand by for further questions. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Bell?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Travis.
Mr. Bell, question for you. You said whole sections were dropped out. Is it out of this particular ordinance, or did I just miss in some of that, that in other ordinances you've seen? And did you see something with this one?
I'm talking in particular about this ordinance.
So what sections were actually dropped completely out?
Well, it's already been mentioned, the, the socioeconomic impact study and the groundwater monitoring, which now has been substituted by this one sentence that I don't feel is adequate.
Thank you.
Further questions? So I can respond to one of your items. I wrote down six specific things, Mr. Bell, that, that you had. Regarding the distance from the edge of the properties, my, I, I made the comment that I was concerned about the distance from the edge of the property, and I didn't understand why the distances that were in the ordinance were selected. So specifically, a mining claim is roughly six hundred feet wide by fifteen hundred feet long. It's roughly twenty point six acres. If you were to subtract two hundred feet from the edge of that entire boundary, which was what the previous number was, you subtract down the usable area of that property from twenty acres down to five, plus or minus. There's some, there's some remainder amounts in there. And so simply by use of an arbitrary number in the ordinance, the county is restricting seventy-five percent of the land area on a specific mining ordinance. That's the reason why I, why I asked the question. And my question to staff was, why would we not follow the same setback requirement as with aggregate mining, which is a basis in the blast, the blast terminology and the effect of that, such that if there's habitable structures, those have a much greater barrier, it's like three hundred feet, but if there's nothing there, why would you artificially limit someone from the use of their property as long as they met all of the requirements of the blasting? So on that specific item, I, I was the one that asked that question. I was the one that suggested that we, we use guidance already provided in a previous mining section for
Mr. Chair, can I comment?
Please.
Well, I think there's a big difference between small scale and large scale, and a large-scale mining operation is not going to be twenty acres. It's going to be much bigger than that. And as we've seen, these large pits, only fifty feet from a neighbor, I believe that's going to infringe too much on the neighbor. So again, I think a compromise here could be to specify different distances, depending on whether it's small scale or large scale, and that was where I'd like to see this headed. Thank you.
Okay. I don't, with regards to the socioeconomic study and the groundwater monitoring and some of those other items, those were.
Mr. Chair, are you going to respond to my comment, or are you just going to move on to something else?
I was going to try to a, a, address the six.
Okay.
Are you, do you have a suggestion for the board?
With regard to?
What the setbacks should specifically be for small scale and large scale.
I'm willing to accept fifty for small scale and two hundred for large.
Are there any other comments on, on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, and maybe it's for Cody or Megan. So we can't be So we can't be more restrictive than the state on this, but is it just this particular item of topic or in general if the state says this is what's allowed and then the and then the other municipalities or the other governing authorities can't be more restrictive?
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So there is significant case law, both from the federal courts and from state courts indicating that local laws can't be more restrictive or more overburdened some than either federal regulations or state regulations. We will get sued by mining companies and we will lose.
So we're talking specifically with mining?
Yes.
Okay.
It typically applies to other types of regulatory actions, but it's most definitely been fleshed out with regard to mining.
Additional questions on this item?
Mr. Chair, this is Rick again.
Go ahead.
How is it that? How is it that the socioeconomic impact study can still be in Lawrence County's mining ordinance?
I don't know the specific answer to that. Cody, do you do you have a response for that item?
Cody Sack, environmental planner. So what what Lawrence County does and what Pennington County does is two totally different things. Lawrence County's first actual ordinance was pretty restrictive and they got sued for it. So that's what we're trying to avoid with ours. My guess is is that a mining operation hasn't challenged them on the requirement for a socioeconomic impact study previously. Also, one thing that Megan might.
And I would just like to point out that I'm not familiar with Lawrence County's ordinances. I know that they only have one where we have two. In terms of what the specific language of it is, I'm not even for sure if what this gentleman is saying is correct or accurate. Ordinances are typically best interpreted by attorneys. So I'm not exactly for sure whether that's true. But in terms of legality and whether we should or shouldn't do it, just because another county does do it, doesn't mean that we should do it. We should follow the law and that's our that's our responsibility as this commission and as my as your counsel, I'm going to tell you to follow the law.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to comment on this. I don't know any details about this, but my guess is that when you're in Pennington County or Custer County or Lawrence County in the Black Hills, you obviously have a greater interest in mining than you might if you were in Brookings County and justifiably so. At the same time, I understand the restrictions that state cannot, that counties, which are creatures of states, cannot impose greater regulations. But I don't see that a socioeconomic study on mining would be a restriction or in any way interfering with the state's obligation. It would cost some money, I assume. Someone would have to pay for it and I suspect Pennington County will not spend money for such an effort.
Correct. And and here's here's where it gets hinky. So if the commission or the Board of Commissioners makes a decision based on that socioeconomic study that is different than what the state would do, then we could get sued and we would lose.
Oh, but that's not what I said. I said, do the study. A study is should be an even handed effort. It may reveal that the problem with mining and the ordinances we have are not in any way inadequate. The fact that we don't do the study reveals that we will never know this extent of the problem. Now, as I go back, I know this costs money and I have a feeling that the county commission is not going to fund such an effort or the state certainly isn't, but we could offer such an effort and then see if there was any interest in funding such an effort because we may learn something that would be in our interest to promote a more stringent state regulation.
And and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Coleman. But the issue is if the state doesn't require it and then we require it and we make an adverse decision based on something that the state isn't requiring, we're making the applicant do more than the state is making them do. Which is why my preference is to only do what the state statutes require us to do and not more. Because there will be a situation eventually, maybe not now, maybe 30 years from now, where everybody forgets about this rule. And they forget that the state doesn't sometimes require it and sometimes does require it. And we require it, find information within that study that we don't like, make an adverse decision because of that. And then we're doing something that's more onerous than what the state is requiring.
I guess I was thinking of a study that didn't necessarily impose any financial burden on mining companies.
And and I'm not so concerned about the financial burden as I.
Well, that would be the only requirement. There would be some cost.
Yeah, I'm not so concerned about the financial burden. I'm more concerned about that information being placed in front of the board and then the board making a decision based on that information that is adverse if the state is not requiring that same study.
Okay, but I'm not suggesting we recommend this.
Okay.
Because we're not a policymaking organization. The county commission is the policymaker. I'm just saying that this is something that perhaps could be done if there was initiative and effort to do so. And we do live in a distinctive part of the state. As I say, our interests are different than the people in Sioux Falls and Aberdeen because they're not going to be impacted by the consequences of this activity. So it seems odd to me that we cannot accommodate some more vigorous approach to this issue of mining than what some legislators and or county commissioners in eastern South Dakota want to do. Do you see my point? That's my.
No, and I I completely agree with your point and I do think it's a valid point. It's just unfortunately there is sometimes a disconnect between what's best policy and what the law is.
I understand your position solely. I really do.
Further comments?
I'm done.
I have a question for our county commission representative.
Excuse me, I've got to leave for a moment.
I know that don't you have like a yearly, a big meeting where resolutions are presented and that sort of thing where each county commission can send resolutions to whatever this annual meeting is?
For the NACO meeting? National Association of County Commissioners?
Is it national or state? But maybe.
I think we just had it, didn't we, Megan? Or? We just.
Well, our timing is not good. I was going to suggest that a resolution could be sent asking the state to to do to insist on these socioeconomic impact studies.
Right. So while we did have our meeting that addresses that where I don't think we even adopted any from Pennington County at this moment because it's before they go to their next meeting does not mean that something can't be drafted and cannot be submitted at a later date, just just to be aware. So because I asked that question because we do have some summer studies that are going to be going on or that are starting up. And my question to them was if, you know, if we don't have anything today prepared, but something comes really good out of these summer studies, can then we, you know, have that added? And they said, yes, of course. So there's still an opportunity to do that. So if there's a resolution of some sort, I would think that you could at least draft it and present it and it could be considered.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is Rick Bell again. May I?
Go ahead, sir.
Again, a study simply gathers the information. So what your legal representative said is if that should lead to some adverse decision, it doesn't necessarily have to lead to adverse decision. And one can say, here are the issues with water. Here are the issues with employment. Here, that's what the study does. It just lays out the issues. What one chooses to do with that is a separate matter. And what I'm saying is I think people should have the information and make the mining companies pay for such a study and then let it lead to where it does. And if and if the county says, we can't really make you do anything more stringent because of these state laws and maybe we have to change the state laws, that's down the road, but at least we have the information. And I think that's what Jim was saying when he spoke earlier, but I don't want to put words in his mouth.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a comment. Some of this stuff, I get it. It seems, you know, a challenge or well, wait a minute, we might get sued or you know, we maybe we shouldn't drill it down to some of these finer points. I get concerned with that only because and I'll say this in most of y'all, if you don't all know, y'all know my land's been impacted by my water wells been impacted by, you know, contamination, you know. Before it was figured out that it was contaminated, you know, people thought everything was fine. And then, of course, whenever the topic was brought up, it has nothing to do with mining, so I'll just take that out of the mindset on this. But ultimately it took almost seven years for for the all three of those entities to even do something to try to start even mitigating the damage. And then now it's, you know, it's expected over 30 years cleanup time, remediation time for, and that's just for the waterways. They don't even know what the ground contamination issue is. So I think being a little extra cautious in Pennington County can't hurt us because we are, we've already seen some major contamination by not knowing what was going to happen because we didn't have something monitoring that. That doesn't mean I'm saying I support exactly what's been presented here. I think I'm about to sit down and start thinking through this one a little bit more because obviously my case is not dealing with mining, but obviously if we if we if we're going to have an ordinance with mining that could impact our water systems, we need to seriously think about that. And there's got to be a way to work with the state on that one. Sorry.
I would even though it the it sounds like the appearance is is that we're dismissive. No ordinance that we pass through here is going to be perfect and it's up for change and amendment at any time to be routed through the staff. So am I pushing to get this done? Yes. Government goes a little slow. We all know that. We can joke about that, right? But having something in place is 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 important. Currently, there's nothing. So I although I I I appreciate all of the comments and those types of things that come, I I am very upfront about I'd like to see these things get done. Are they ever perfect? No. We spent I don't know how many, five, six different meetings for hours and hours and hours and hours and hours about the vacation home rentals. Remember this, six years ago? Okay, and it's still not perfect.
And gravel mining too, might you?
That's right. So I I so I want to get through these things and I would like to have this thing move forward because there's a whole nother round of conversations that happen at the at the board level where they where they ultimately will make this decision. So getting back and being very specific, Mr. Bell, about about your comments. I don't know. I don't have a sense for what this board wants to do with regards to the socioeconomic report requirement. It was in there. It was removed. It was removed with by staff based off of recommendations from staff. So so that's where this is currently at and is and I want to turn through all of this. So I guess maybe we we is there somebody else that wants that added back in before this goes to the board? I tell you what, I'm going to change gears here a little little bit. Mr. Bell, I'd like to come back to you. I believe that there's another person on Zoom and I'd like to make sure that her comments get heard in case she has to go somewhere else. And are you okay with me coming back to you, sir?
Yes, fine. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to hear the speaker Nancy Hilding.
Hi, this is Nancy Hilding. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. My name is Nancy Hilding. I'm president of Prairie Hills Audubon Society. I I typed my contact info into the chat. We're a West River, South Dakota Environmental Group, a nonprofit NGO. Okay, so I would first like to bring, I think, a new concept that hasn't been said yet, perhaps. I think that there should be added to the application a request to discuss the presence and potential impacts to state listed and federally listed endangered species, threatened and endangered species. This is of particular concern in South Dakota and Pennington County because we have the northern long-eared bat in the Black Hills. The bat is susceptible to white nose syndrome, which just basically when it arrives within 10 years, it wipes out the bat. It has been federally listed as threatened with a four bill rule, four D rule, which is a giant loophole. But the the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is in the process of upgrading the listing from threatened to endangered. And so one of the very bad things for the bat is if they're disturbed during the winter when they're hibernating. So if you're having mining blasting going on near any of the caves in the Black Hills where these bats are, you know, the impacts to the bats could be very bad and this is going to be a federally listed species. So I think in your application section, you need to have something about disclosure about all state and federally listed species. In South Dakota, we have an Endangered Species Act passed in the 1970s which allows the commission, the Game Fish and Parks Commission, to designate animals as listed. And our our state list is different than the federal list. Okay, because it can be endangered in South Dakota, but not in the nation. So and then there's another thing is that the states do wildlife action plans, the Fish and Wildlife Service gives them money to do this and they identify species of greatest conservation need and and or greatest conservation concern. So, you know, and I would like those to be also reviewed, whether there's a species of greatest conservation need or greatest conservation concern. It's they're identified in the state's wildlife action plan that you include a section on impacts to rare species in the application, particularly federally endangered species. Okay, so I want to go next to, I'm sorry, I'm a bad person. I have not read this ordinance in enough detail yet. I'm just doing the best that I can. Okay. So I'm going to the definition of hard rock mining operation. And I I actually live in Mead County. And I and I have learned from watching Game Fish and Parks propose a very large shooting range in Mead County, not Pennington County, of the absolute failure of the federal government to regulate shooting ranges, except at the beginning for stormwater construction permits and at the end for closure for hazardous waste. And in the meantime, there's no specific regulation. But what happens in a shooting range, particularly ones where lots of lead is deposited, it becomes like plaster mining for gold because they go in there periodically and scoop up the soil and dump it into what looks like plaster mining machines, shake up all the soil, separate out the lead, which is heavy, like a gold is heavy, and then take the lead off and sell it for processing. And this is looked at as reclamation rather than mining, but it's just exactly like plaster mining. And if you have clay soil, which we can have out here, the lead doesn't separate well, so then they shoot water into the, in essence, plaster mining machine to separate the lead from the the clay. So all of this is basically not regulated except for generic surface water and air quality regulations and it's not considered mining, but it is really de facto mining. And and so, you know, this this whole bit about you can't be more stringent than the federal regulations. Well, if there are no federal or state regulations, can you then create them or not, which is an argument that's going on, you know, like if the state doesn't have any requirements about socioeconomic studies and they don't exist, are you making something that doesn't exist on the federal state level more stringent because it doesn't exist? So I am expressing a concern about the non-regulation at a federal or state level of what I think is de facto mining of lead, which is very toxic and very dangerous substance. And that is in addressing to the definition of hard rock mining at D seven. Okay, and I would like to say I agree with Rick Bell on needing a socioeconomic study. Okay, and so then I'm going to talk, and I agree that sending a letter to people at point five miles is inadequate, and it should be a mile. And so now I'm going to talk about notice, which is also sending a letter to a mile instead of point five mile. It's on page four of this thing under two public hearing. Let's see, it's, I think it's E for E two, E one, maybe. Or two, E two. E one, two. Excuse me, sorry. E one, two, public hearing. You're saying that you have to give notice 10 days in advance. I I could not find a definition of day in your definitions. I don't know, in some other place in Pennington County Rules and Regs ordinances, it says 10 days means 10 working days. If you have 10 working days written, then this is actually 14 actual days. But it is our belief that notice of 10 days is to the general public is inadequate. And this should be longer, 14, 21, 30 days to the public. And so then I noticed that you're sending a letter out to the nearby landowners 30 days in advance. So you should be knowing, you should know that this is coming and should have a very nice letter about what's happening 30 days in advance. And I went onto your website, and you have the public notices up there, which tears to the newspaper, some newspaper link. And it's my suggestion, and and you might not be able to do this today, but you investigate creating a website where you post all those letters that you are sending to adjacent landowners about items that are coming before the planning board and that you have that online, you know, they can get links to letters that have been sent to adjacent landowners 30 days in advance. You know, you could try to have those up by 21 days in advance so that we have more advanced notice than 10 days. 10 days is not enough time to review a mining application. And it's not just the people who live point five miles away that need to hear about it faster. Okay, so then there was another thing I wanted to say. Okay, we agree with Rick Bell that 50 feet from the property line and 30 feet from the existing capital dwellings is an inadequate setback. It's not just vibrations that are an issue, and it's not just the dwelling. If you are, you know, out in your yard, the noise, the dust, all of these things are going to attack the adjacent landowners. So, you know, I what what he said, 50 feet, 200 feet, you need, you need something, a greater setback, particularly for large noisy operations and dusty operations. And so that is all the comments I have. And, you know, it's my apologies. I haven't gone through this whole thing. So I've gone through parts of it. So thank you. And I thank you from, we are just delighted that you are creating ordinances so that Pennington County has an ability to weigh in on mines in the county itself. Thank you. Bye bye. Well, I'll stay on if you have a question.
Any questions for? Starting.
For Nancy?
Building, excuse me. Thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you.
We've talked about this 10-day requirement in the past. It's been addressed at several of the meetings. The 10, I believe that there's a definition with regards to a certain number of days or less being calendar days versus working days. But the 10 days, from my understanding, is in accordance with every other publication that the county does and which is a standard. We understand that it may not be the the most amount of time or, you know, enough time for everyone to review what's going on. But but it is the standard by which all other items are are addressed, so. Can you talk about endangered species?
Oh, yeah, Cody's Agro- environmental planner. Endangered, so one thing that I think we got to, one thing to consider here is when you're coming to a mining operation, especially hard rock mining between the local government, the feds and the state, we're very first. You have to get our permit first before you can even go apply for the state. And same with the feds. So the the federal government, especially in the Black Hills, for example, a couple of years ago, I went to a meeting at the Forest Service with all the jurisdictions. For someone who's looking at doing some exploratory mining, they're 10 years, they're expecting 10 years before their environmental impact study is done. So the federal government has studies that go into what endangered species are in what area. And I would say that county staff wouldn't be the authority on what is an endangered species and what's not and what constitutes a safe distance from said endangered species and what isn't. That's not necessarily in the county's preview for information that we have.
I guess the general question, though, is is that is a review of endangered species in an area that is proposed to be mined, something that happens at at some level of approval for for a mine?
Correct, yes. At some point, it would be.
I guess I'd like to know at what point, state level, federal level? And are hard rock mining applications looked at by the feds?
So for for example, that exploratory mining that I was talking about, they're currently working on that environmental impact study, and they haven't even applied for a county permit or a state permit yet. So it's done relatively early in the process for them, especially if it's on federal land.
Megan Krueger with the state's attorney's office. There's both state law and federal law on endangered species. So I don't know this for sure, but in my assumption, it would be at both levels. Obviously, I'm not an expert on endangered species because it's just really not something that we ever look at as the county. And we don't really have the expertise to provide that information anyway.
Okay. Cody, my next question is regards to the question about the notice of property owners, including contract for deed buyers on the half mile inclusive of right of way, et cetera. The half mile came from what?
The aggregate mining. It follows the aggregate mining exactly, words.
So the other the other ordinance that does open surface mining is is what was followed for the half mile here?
It's the exact same requirement taken word for word out of that.
Okay. There was another question about posting letters to adjacent landowners on on websites. Is where the notes that I took down. And then can you speak about the website address with the items that are 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 or are not posted?
So I believe that there is a website for or a link on our website for hard rock mining. I don't have access to to change anything on that, so I can't really speak to it. I think Brittany has that that access to change it.
So it's potentially has not been updated with the changes that have come down?
Potentially correct, yes.
Okay. And I guess the side yard setback was is a current discussion that we were having with Mr. Bell. So any other questions for for Mrs. Hilding before I go back to Mr. Bell? Okay.
Can I say something? I was not just speaking about federally endangered species. I was also talking about state endangered species. And I have not recently looked at the mining laws. But in general, things may have a reference to federally endangered species. They in general ignore state endangered species. And the state law prohibits take, you're not allowed to take state listed species, but there's no protection of habitat on a state level. I I am therefore, and I haven't looked it up recently, cynical that you are going to find anything in state law at the mining level that protects state listed species. So and 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 to protect the biodiversity of South Dakota, we should be protecting both our state listed and our federally listed.
Questions?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Nancy, but it does sound like from what you just said that we don't have much control over what the state is going to list and in regard to whether they're going to add habitat to their review.
What I said was, I said that this should be on the application form when the when the people are submitting their application form. They they can go to the South Dakota Natural Heritage place that Eileen Dowd Stupel runs and ask them, they have to pay money, but they can ask them to give a list of all known occurrences of state and federal listed species in the area that they give the parameters for. So it should be a requirement that when they are submitting an application, that they take that effort to call up the state Game Fish and Parks and get the list of all of the the state and federally listed species in the area where they're going to mine. And then that information is included in the mining application that they give to you. You know, it's not requiring them to comply with anything. It's just requiring them to collect information and give it to you while you're evaluating the mine application.
That part I understood. The part I didn't understood stand would be that if they can get the information that that species is within their area of the permit, if the state's not looking at, what would you call it, endangerment of their habitat, how are they going to get that information from?
The the state, the state, the federal law protects the species and it protects designated habitat. The state law just says you can't kill the species. Okay, so if you're building a mine over its habitat, you will be killing the species. So so building a mine over the habitat that kills it will be forbidden. Okay, but but that's a difference, but it's a weakness in the state law versus the federal law. The habitat is not protected by state law.
That's where I was headed. That's Nancy, that's where I was headed. In other words, on a county level, the fact that they, the particular species is present would automatically, or as I understand what you're saying, is that that's killing the habitat. So they're out right then. And we're on the county level where that information wasn't even available.
The inform, I'm, what the information is available if you call up, get, you can get from Game Fish and Parks a list of their awareness and their understanding of what species are present on a given area. Doesn't mean they know everything, you know, they might not, you know, nobody has walked to that place. Nobody has looked, and there's no knowledge. But but if they have knowledge, they can give it to you. And what I'm saying is it should be a requirement that the that the applicant tells you what they can find out about the threatened and endangered species, both state and federal list. And those are different lists. And they're, the feds do not care about the state listed species. Okay, and I and 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 when I see numerous regulations and planning documents and all of this stuff coming forward, what people tend to only be worried about is the federal species because there's all these laws that, you know, you know, you you run afoul of the federal government if you don't pay attention to federal. And it's very rare that the state listed species are required in in state law, that you have to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any specific changes as a result of that? Okay, thank you very much for your comments. I'd like to go back to Mr. Bell. And both you and Mrs. Hilding have have indicated that the distances from the exterior lot lines are are just not great enough. And I'm trying to understand what, you you said that you would be okay with 250, but I'm trying to understand what the justification is to go to 200.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
In response to your question, I think anybody who's been near a large scale mining operation, and I think Ms. Hilding just recently talked about the noise, the dust, et cetera, is is significantly different for these kinds of large scale mining operations. And so we just need to be protective of the neighbors. And that's why I suggested there be two values, one for small scale and the second for large scale.
Okay. Cody, you have a question?
Well, I think it's important to point out that the way that we define large scale versus small scale, it's not necessarily indicative of acreage. It's really more on tons, and it's actually 25,000 tons annually. So you could have a five acre piece of plot of land that you're pulling 25,000 acres out annually or tons annually, and that would be considered a large scale operation. So you're still going to have that same issue with site distancing and and size of the piece of parcel, so. If that makes sense, am I making sense?
Yeah, you're saying you could have a very, very small parcel and pulling up enough enough material that makes it a large scale operation. This is my concern. Do, should there be burms? Should there be buffers? Should there be all the things that are listed in here? I absolutely agree with that. My concern for the county is is if someone has, they they want to come here and and they want to get a mine permit, and this document restricts to the point where they can't do anything on that piece of property, at what point then does that put the county?
I mean, I, as your attorney, I would say that that creates liability for us insofar as it could create a taking of that property.
I agree. Which is a, which is not a, not the position that I'd like to have the county be in. And and so I I I think it's important that we're having these conversations. I think it's important to come up with reasonable values that that wouldn't take a parcel of property and and make it not usable for, if there's if there's a mining claim on it, that will become an issue for the for the county. And so I, again, the the reason that I I suggested 50 was was based off of the the blasting and the items that were spoke about on the aggregate mining. Do you wish to speak on this? Yeah, please come forth. Let's hash this out.
Lily, a starting PhD. The takings question, the way it's being framed doesn't include exploration because when someone has come in to the county, they don't just start mining. They explore first. So they should know on a piece of property, how many acres will be disturbed by their operation ahead of time. So that's something that the county will have that information as well in its decision-making process. The other thing is I live half a mile from the Simon operation, and I can clearly hear them if I'm in my yard or my windows are open five days a week. So there should be a larger buffer zone so that people are not disturbed in the peaceful enjoyment of their property. Thank you.
Further comments, questions? Trying to see how we get to the end of the of all of these comments and these changes. It sounds like there's some concerns from the citizens about some changes that got dropped. There were some items in here that got changed. And and there's some disagreement on whether or not those things should get added to the added to the ordinance amendment. or not those things should get added to the, added to the ordinance amendment um or not at this stage. And so I'm looking into the commission to understand if there's specific changes that people want made at this point to the document. Is everybody willing to vote on the document as it is?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
That's an interesting question or way to put it. And I'm cheering the vacation home rental one right now, and we're talking about dissenting opinions, and we have dissenting opinions certainly within our own population. And I think we're at a spot where this has got to go forward, and those dissenting opinions have to be coming in in writing to the Board of Commissioners who are the final say statement on this, and uh.
To be fair to them, and I'm, I don't want to interrupt you, but they have submitted items in writing.
Right.
Those items have not been addressed fully. We understand that. We understand you're frustrated about that, that they, that they just don't automatically get amended to the document and and incorporated.
But that's where I was headed. I think we, that needs to be forwarded on in a format that's understandable for the Board of Commissioners to look at in the way of those dissenting opinions that have not been acted upon or included or have been removed. You've got three really areas there.
Sure.
And I think that needs to go on so that folks that do have the dissenting opinions feel there is transparency between us and the Board of Commissioners and the citizens of the county. But at some point, you've got to move it forward to the folks that are going to drop the hammer on the thing, one way or the other, and the wording and whatnot that exists. Megan would be the first to tell you, I'm one challenging all the time what the difference between uh state requirements are and what I think we need in this county. So uh that's going to exist when it goes forward. It's not going to change just because I'm unhappy or happy with something. I think it needs to go forward, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your comments.
I agree. I think we just need to do it. If we need to make amendments down the road, fine, but at least get it out there, something that they can vote on.
Does anybody else have have specific changes that need to be made to the document? I know, uh Mr. Bell, that um I I'm wrestling with the this item in my mind with regards to the setback, because I don't, I don't want the county to put themselves in that position, and I and I appreciate the comment about the the exploration and the and the drilling and and whether that that would determine whether that, whether or not the 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 vein would be there or the whatever would be followed. But if it was fa, if it was there and it exceeded the setback limit, um and there was a a significant portion of the lot that could not be used, um the the, I would not want the county to be put into that position when it was already reviewed and and thought about at this point, so um.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Bell.
Rick, just uh in quick response, and if this, if you should choose to pass this on to the to the full commission, I mean, we can address it, and I'll I'll do some more homework. I I find it uh somewhat, uh I'm a little skeptical that you could get 25,000 tons a year out of a five acre plot. How big of a hole would that be? Just, you know, it seems unlikely in my, in my experience. But if you choose to leave this alone, uh we can, we can talk to the full commission about it. The other thing I would like to say is I'm a little disappointed that staff would say, you know, we took that right out of the gravel mining ordinance. Uh you know, hard rock mining is different, and I think you have an opportunity to treat things differently. So if, you know, if it's, should be done differently, then I think you should take that opportunity, and that's all I'll say at the present time. Thank you.
Well, I I I I want you to know that I do understand that there's, there would be a significant difference between somebody up in 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 the hills, you know, plaster mining, maybe their mining claim, and a large mining operation. But I don't, it's not clear to me right now what that setback should be and and its impacts of of the various properties. And so to, you know, should there be a compromise there? I I'm suggesting to you that I think that there should be, sir. I think there should be a a compromise, and I'm not sure that it's defined um at this point. The the thing that I I I do see though is is that there there's a requirement for at least 300 feet from a habitable structure. And so the the this this idea of a 50-foot limit from a property line that where there may not be anything on the other side of the property line compared to somebody that has a house, there's already a the, an 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 additional requirement i- if there's a, if there's a house adjacent to that um property, so. I I don't know if I have an answer for that. Go ahead, sir.
Um, Mr. Bell commented that a whole section or two had been taken out of the um document, and if my recollection is right, that those were taken out but referenced it because they were a state issue or something like that.
Uh, could we say environmental planner? Yes, yeah, correct. That's why they were taken out, is that they're covered by the state.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Without a question, the comments and the public input have certainly uh instilled in my mind that there's some questions in regards to groundwater monitoring and impact study issues, of which I have no doubt I'll be stating some of my thoughts on. We had one of our members already stated some thought on, but I do not see that we are going to change those issues at our level. So again, I still have to support. I I believe Mr. Bell's done a good job of pointing out those two matters, the impact study in the groundwater. So I do want to say that it still needs to go forward with those in consideration, and I'll be addressing it too. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Travis.
Before someone makes a motion, if someone decides to make a motion, um I'd like it to be, at least be considered that whatever sections have been dropped out, that it, they'd be put in there and shown that they were dropped out for the Board of Commission to see what sections were removed, so that uh we understand what has already kind of already been navigated through so they, so we can see the full impact.
So you're suggesting that the the previous draft be included when this is forwarded to the board?
That would, whoever makes the motion, I'm just, I'm saying it would be wise for them to be able to see all the the work that's been done ahead of time to see what y'all put in or what was initially proposed, what has been removed since then, and what this board decides today if they move it forward, what they're moving forward with, so that there's some comparison in there.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, before we, it, I agree with Travis, except that I think this is four minutes, it's got to go forward to, and I think the public's going to help us in regards to those things that have been dropped, as long as we have the wording available historically out of the the department, I guess would be my concern.
Okay.
Uh, could I say environmental planner? I can add the previous uh what was seen at the meetings previous into the packet for the board. I can add that in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question for our commissioner. Um, does the commission want a copy of the ordinance all redlined and underlined and and with all that information in it? Because normally it would be a clean copy that would be sent to the commission.
I'll be honest, anytime I see a change to an ordinance, I want to see it stricken out, and I want to see it like it is. Like, if you go to peer and you look at what they're proposing, when they do the strikeouts and the underlines and all, I like seeing that, because I get that, it gives you a feel of what you've talked through. Uh, in fact, I think there was a a particular agenda item that, on this last meeting that I asked for before we could move through, is ordinance 14, I asked, I would like to see it in a manner that we can see what is changing, so we understand what's going on with that.
I would ask Jerry, how does that work?
Yeah, that could be a a whole different beast.
Sorry, I missed the last part that you said, but I can put a redlined version into the ordinance for the the packet, so you'll see everything, you'll see the old, you'll see what we started with, what was amended and and everything. And I would, and I would like to say that when we first met in February at that very first meeting, staff did say that there was going to be some big changes, and then when it was continued to the second meeting and you didn't see an agenda, staff stated at that meeting that it was because it was going to look totally different than what you saw at the previous meeting. So there was some transparency that there was going to be major changes to that, that ordinance from what you saw in the first, first uh meeting in February, so.
Additional conversation? Are there any more comments, uh Mr. Bell or 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 Mrs. Hilding? Do you have any other comments for the board?
No, and thank you for the ability to to make such comments.
No, no, not at this time, and thank you very much for letting me attend by Zoom. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you. It sounds like we're at a position to um vote on this item. Staff recommends um approval of ordinance amendment OA 22 dash 01 to the July 5th, 2022 um commission meeting, it's July 5th, correct? Did I get that right?
Yeah, because we'll have to advertise for it. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add to be that uh recommendation so that we can make a motion that that version would be a redlined version of where we started that would go forward based upon our vote today.
Is that your motion?
That'll be my motion.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. And did, did I give the dates correct on on when it would go to the next meeting?
July 5th.
Will it go to that one?
Yes.
Okay. Motion and approval for ordinance amendment OA 22 dash 01, and noting that the redlined version of the document be provided to the board.
Correct. And that's the document that we, I'm moving forward.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Any support of this vote moving forward? I think I've worked on it for how many months now? Several? I'm I'm just saying from my, from my support moving it forward, if I, voting yes on this most likely is what I'll end up doing. It's not that I agree with everything that's in there, it's just I think it does need to move forward so we can kind of review everything I've done, because sometimes our vote here is is a misnomer that maybe we support everything that's in there, and I'm not necessarily saying that, it just needs to get to the next level, and let us kind of see what y'all, all the work y'all have put into this, which is, uh, it sounds like it's been a significant amount of work, and we appreciate that. That way, we can just get it to the next level. So just putting that out there.
Who's the second? Jerry?
Me.
Karen? Okay. Further discussion?
I want to make sure that I understand, are we're going to send a clean bill through, and then Cody's going to also put a second one that's redlined? They're separate, right?
Uh, could I say environmental planner? Yes, that's what will happen, there'll be a clean version and a redlined version.
Yep, I approve that, yep.
I I just want to make one comment. I, you know, I'm still endlessly frustrated by the fact that we are obligated, we have a responsibility to provide an ordinance at this level, but we are not given the agency to create an ordinance that's appropriate for our circumstances and our county. We cannot, we cannot exceed state requirements. We can't add any burdens. It seems kind of silly. I mean, I, it almost makes me wonder, are we obligating mining companies to have to pay an additional fee before they start mining? Is that the only purpose of it? It's frustrating. Now, maybe I'm misconstruing this, maybe there is something in this document that is over and above or beyond what state requirements would be and or federal requirements, but that that's, that that's, I find that frustrating. As I say, we have a responsibility, but we're given no agency to meet that responsibility unless we comply with what's already been provided by state statute, state rules. I mean, that is, it seems pointless to spend hours and hours discussing these things when people come on like this who say, well, we should add this. I may not be, I may not agree with Mr. Uh, the gentleman up there. But the agency is not there to do what he suggests, because this is beyond our powers, as I understand it. So that's just my frustration. And I realize that doesn't move anything forward, but I I think it's odd that we are conducting business in that fashion.
Mr. Chair, I'll be brief. I'm looking forward to the fact that we're moving this forward with the hope that the impact study and the groundwater testing is going to be further discussed and looked into by the appropriate parties, and the appropriate individuals can give us direction on it. And if we sit here and spin our wheels on it, we're not going to give that agency that Mr. Coleman talks about. This way, we're looking at it and we're putting it on the table, and it's there for people to speak up about it. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Go ahead, Kevin.
I'm not sure the exact conduit to um, you know, it looks like it's a, would be a fairly easy legislative fix if that's what we need to do to be able to say, you know, if I grew up by Brookings, that we don't have a lot of mining over there, but we do out here, that most of the legislature would say, if that's what they need out there, it'd be easy to get through. But I don't know how that can materialize itself from our group.
Additional discussion? Noting none, um all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 29.
Agenda item number 29 is the county board report. The Board of Commissioners heard the Planning Commission's recommendations from the May 23rd meeting at their Friday, June 10th meeting, and they concurred with all but two of the recommendations. The first one was planned junior development overlay 22 dash 06 for the Rushmore Music Festival and Abboton Breakfast. Uh, the applicants were Wallfish and Smirnova, and that was continued to the June 21st, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting. And the second was the subdivision regulations ordinance amendment, and they also recommended to continue that one to the June 21st, 2022 board meeting. And that was just to line up with county highways ordinance 14 hearing dates, so they go effective at the same time.
Have there been a lot of changes to the subdivision regulations since it left here?
Hmm, uh, I think some of the biggest changes that were on there was that we took the tables out. You remember the tables for the road requirements?
Yep.
And we moved those to ordinance 14. Uh, there were a lot of smaller administrative type changes that we got feedback from Janelle to update just for readability and portability, I guess.
And it was important that 14 went through at the same time as the subdivision to make sure there wasn't a gap in those tables, correct?
That's why they continued it from the last meeting so that the the implementation date would be the same.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, what was the date on the music festival one?
June 21st.
Yeah.
June 21st.
Thank you.
And and it wasn't an unanimous vote, just so you know.
Uh, anything else from the county board?
No, sir.
Did you, oh, never mind. Items from the public? Noting none. Items from staff.
I think the only thing we have from staff is the building permit report, which I believe you've all been provided a copy of.
I also have something.
Would you like to go first?
No, you can go first.
Uh, so if you're looking, uh, we compared 2021 to 2022 uh for the May period. Uh, looks like single family residence numbers are down, but the valuations are up by a million dollars, or nearly a million dollars. Uh, overall, uh, from 2021 to 2022, uh, we are up a little from there. Looks like we have, uh, for overall building permits, we went from 62 to 65 from May last year. Um, value, overall valuation is up $3 million, or nearly $3 million this year. Just kind of an analysis of what you've been provided there, kind of an overview. Any questions of me regarding that?
Questions on the billing permit report? Okay.
I have something very brief. Um, so at the special meeting in front of the Board of Commissioners, Brittany and I had brought up the possibility of the Board of Adjustment moving from the Board of Commissioners to the Planning Commission. And why would you do that? Um, and the reason for that is because I I think partially the Board of Commissioners are becoming overwhelmed with all of the stuff that they have to do. Um, and, and um, the other part of that is to actually get a little bit more consistent with state statute. Um, obviously, the Board of Commissioners can sit as the, sit as the Board of Adjustment, um, but there are some little nuances as in state statute that I just think it's cleaner being in front of the Planning Commission, and frankly, it's in line being in front of the planning commission, and frankly, it's in line with what all of the other larger jurisdictions are now doing. Um, I, I don't think that any of the larger jurisdictions in South Dakota have their board of commissioners sitting as the board of adjustment still. Um, so kind of trying to, I suppose, get with the times. Um, so I'm writing a memo, um, for you all, and we can discuss it further at the next, um, meeting, but I just want you all to have that on your mind. Um, if you have any specific questions, you can.
So that would be variances and, and all that?
Variances, and I would prefer to have CUPs put in front of the board of adjustment too. Um, the voting measures would be different, and my memorandum will address both of those things. Um, but I just think it's clearer, cleaner in state statute, says the board of adjustment can address CUPs. Um, and then we're just clearly in line with state statute as opposed to going under, uh, there's this provision in state statute that says, or the approving body, but doesn't say that you can actually have it be the planning commission or another body. Um, so I just think it would be cleaner.
Yeah.
And clearer for the public, and frankly, for judges, when we do have, um, appeals or, um, you know.
Lawsuits.
Dissenters. Um, we could say, well, it says right here, the board of adjustment decides. Yeah. Um, so that's kind of the thought process. I just want it to be on your guys' radar, because I think that the board of commissioners wanted to hear first how angry you guys would be about that.
May I speak?
The floor is yours.
On one hand, I think it would be nice to know what the variances and things are, because then usually we get some item that's based on what variance was approved by the board of commissioners, and we don't know their background, so that would be nice.
And a lot of times, the variances and CUPs, they go hand in hand, as we saw today. And I'm not going to talk about specific items, but you guys know that a lot of times the items that you're deciding here go hand in hand with variances that are in front of the board. Um, and it might make it a little bit more streamlined, so you're not hearing the same things twice.
Right.
Um, you know, you can hear the variance, and then you can hear the CUP that's attached to that variance, and you have all the same information. Um, so you don't have to hear everything twice. So the board of commissioner doesn't have to hear it once, and then you guys have to hear it again. I mean, it's, it's an effort to make things go faster, so.
Question?
Yeah.
We're running between 400 and 600 pages now.
Yep.
Now what?
It's, I, I mean, unfortunately, it's, it's that way with the board of commissioner too. I mean, Travis, how long are your guys' packets?
Well, our packets are probably close to twice that sometimes, most of the time.
Yeah. I mean, board of commissioner meetings are going until 3 o'clock in the afternoon now.
Consistently.
Consistently. So it's, it's one of those things where I think we're, we're going to have to start shifting and putting some of the variances, because usually it's individuals as opposed to large decisions that are going to affect the community at, at large. Um, variances typically deal with one individual and their problem with their individual property, as opposed to kind of these overarching issues that the board of commissioners deal with. And so I think one of the other efforts and desires is to get individual issues in front of the planning commission and the larger decisions in front of the board, um, as an overall kind of framework for how we make decisions in the county.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
What I'd throw in is, you're certainly looking at an elected body versus an appointed body.
Yep.
And, uh, that's where the broadest expansion of my thinking's going to go. Uh, there's got to be advantages to the elected body of, uh, diverting some of these things. It helps the vote count, I would think. And then number two, uh, the same elected body's going to have more difficulty finding people to serve, uh, on an ever elongating volunteer basis. So right away, there's two things. So, good luck.
Yeah, I mean, there are definitely benefits and detriments to both. I mean, it obviously works because other places do it.
You bet.
Um, I, I do think that there is a benefit to taking the politics out of deciding variances. Um, I just really do. I mean, because I don't think that the commissioners should have to make their decisions based on what is this one person going to do to me in the electorate?
Yeah.
Um, you guys have a little bit more cushioning to make some difficult decisions, because variances are difficult decisions. Um, and you have a little bit of buffer, whereas you guys have to deal with it directly head on with your electorate. Um.
Maybe I'll just look at it different. I just, I try to make the best decision regardless. I, because usually, yeah, you're right. I mean, there is politics in it, but I don't know, maybe I just, I didn't come into this job looking at it that way. I just tried to figure out what's, what's the facts and what's the best decision in it. But I, I do understand your point.
Yeah. And, and I, you know, I know that that's one of the things that I think both Deb and Ron brought up when we discussed it at the board level, is taking the politics out of it. Um.
Megan, does the city, the planning commission of the city meets every week, don't they?
I.
They used to.
Think so. Yeah. And, you know, one thing that, um, you know, Jason and I had talked about was maybe just once a month doing variances and CUPs, and then having, um, that as a separate hearing. I mean, obviously, we can always discuss how we want to do scheduling, if we want to try to cram it into the existing meetings. I mean.
I would look at, uh, uh, what would you call it? Uh, citizen involvement as the separation point. Maybe those meetings had to be at a different time, and on greater citizen involvement is involved, variances, CUPs, that sort of thing. Just, there's a lot to think about there, and I, I'm going to stay out of it, and I'll just try to go to sleep at night and get it organized.
Yeah, so that's why I wanted to bring it up, just as a idea, and then.
I just want to add one thing. You know, to me, variances is, if you could come to a conclusion about them by simply adding up the minuses and the pluses on a ledger, that would be fine. If it was just a bureaucratic sort of, you know, this is what the ordinance says, it's clear, it's undeniable. But most of those variances are, are pretty vague. And in that circumstance, I think the political body should be making those decisions, because they're less clear rather than an appointed body. Now, it does insulate them, I agree. But, uh, they are really the ones who ought to take the heat, because the citizen walks away after we make a judgment, and he complains about pointy headed bureaucrats, et cetera. And when, when he gets a poor judgment from a political figure, he can do something about it, if he chooses. And it seems to me he has at least the opportunity for some satisfaction. You can't do anything else.
Yeah, and I don't know if I would necessarily agree with you, because ultimately, you are all appointed by the elected officials. So you can still do something about it. You can elect out your elected officials, and then they can get rid of you guys and replace you with who they want. I mean, ultimately, there is, there is electorate. It's not like the city in the three mile planning jurisdiction where those people really, they don't have a say in those decisions at all. Um, you know, whereas here, your appointments are controlled by the board. So really, there is that political voice, there just is a little bit of cushion between the two.
We can all handle it, just like Ron Busker used to do. He voted no on all of them.
And you know, I, I think that variances are, the way that they have their forms set up with the yeses, the nos, and they answer, and they fill out the little boxes. I mean, we have specific criteria, and I know that people like to do whatever they want on their property. Um, and I know Travis is squinting at me right now with his property rights eyes. Um, but we do have very clear rules, um, in place, and I do think most of the time, there is a pretty good answer on what it should or shouldn't be. Because every time that you deviate from the ordinance, you're allowing somebody to break the law, and that's what a variance is.
That precedent too.
But sometimes there, those precedences, y- you know, the, for example, I know that there's been certain cases that staff is always going to recommend denial, because it meets the, it doesn't meet the, the ordinance perspective, but there are in certain cases where they're like, but it makes sense for, they have to ask for the variance, and then it makes sense for, for us to move forward on those. So, um, it's not cut, cut and dry, even whenever we move to that aspect of it. I mean, variances, there are a need for a variance, uh, based on the way of our, the, the wording of our ordinance, and many of them, even though the staff is going to recommend denial, on, on the backside of it, they would say, it makes sense, and this is what they have to do to be able to move forward, and it's appropriate. We just can't recommend approval.
Mr. Chair, I think we need to go on. I've never seen it where the board of commissioners or staff has ever wanted to increase the number of variances, so we've killed that. Both are on the same page, believe me.
Yeah, and you know, ultimately, if we see the same variance coming through over and over and over again, we need to be looking at our ordinance and fixing it. We shouldn't, if we're approving the same variance over and over and over again, why is our ordinance like that at all?
Well, a, a big, a big reason for the, um, the update to the comprehensive plan was, was a result of various items happening in different zoning categories and trying to clean up some of the, I'll call it the low to mid-range acreages, right?
Yeah, and you know, the compre, I see the comprehensive plan and variances as kind of two different things. Um, you know, one really great example I, I think of is, what are the, the hole that you have to dig when you're doing? Profile hole. We had profile hole variances all the time. Like, every single person, they came through, wanted a variance, the subdivision regulations for profile holes, and it just became a, a question of why is our ordinance saying that you have to do this if we're just going to allow somebody to do their profile hole later? Um, and so we fixed it, and we changed the ordinance, and that's really what we should be doing. Um, because with my lawyer hat on, variances should be few and far between. If we see that something is consistently coming back over and over again, we need to fix the ordinance.
I think if you look at the legals, which, and I do, uh, the variances, I always thought that was part of us when I first started. I didn't realize that it was part of, of these fellows at all. So in my way of thinking, if I don't look at the number of pages it's going to increase, I think it makes sense. I really do. I think that's what we're here to do, and I think that goes right along with it. How it works out, I don't know.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll send you guys a memo. We'll talk about it more. This is more just to get you guys thinking about it. It's not going to be a fast process getting everything switched over, um, because there's a lot of kinks to work out. But I'm going to be sending you guys a memo, so that way you can review it. You are fully informed of what everything will look like, could look like, um, and then we can go from there. So.
Items from the membership. Noting none. Adjournment is their motion.
Go move.
Second.
Motion and second for adjournment. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We adjourned, everybody. Thank you.